Yes, Mayor Stewart, and there are quorum, there is quorum available.
Great, thanks. I think we'll start now then, just as I see we're at exactly at 6 by my clock. I'll now call this public hearing of Thursday, July 9th to order. Counsel, for the purposes of confirming we have quorum, please ensure your video is turned on. So I will do periodic roll calls because this is a quasi judicial forum that we're in. So if I don't see your video, I will do roll calls periodically. This meeting will be convened by electronic means as authorized under the order of the Minister of Public Safety and Solicitor General of the Province of British Columbia Emergency Program Act, Ministerial Order Number M192. And as such, council members are participating by phone and as Chair of this meeting, I'm also participating by phone. Please note that my connection is lost during any portion of this meeting. We will recess the meeting until my connection is restored. If council loses connection during any portion of the hearing, we'll need to recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council loses connection during the voting process, we have staff on hand to facilitate getting you back online quickly, although that won't be the case this evening because we have many, many speakers to this item. To ensure that quorum is maintained through this meeting, please let the clerk know if you're leaving the meeting. And that's really important as this public hearing is expected to take multiple days to complete. It is important that the clerk is informed if you are not present to ensure that any information you have missed in your absence will be sent to you. This meeting will continue with audio only as council are participating in the meeting by phone. Members of the public can listen to the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out at Van City Clerk. Presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. Per the usual practice, sorry, the online request to speak form is closed during the hearing. Registration will reopen after recess tonight until 1 hour before reconvening tomorrow. During the meeting, access to the meeting is available by calling toll free 1-855-353-9183. That's 1-855-353-9183, followed by participant code 92529. I do hear some beeping in the background. If folks could just check to make sure they're muted, that would be great. Lastly, we have speakers who will be providing comments to council by phone and a moderator will assist in patching the speakers through when their turn comes up. Clerks, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart in the chair. Counselor Carr.
Here.
Counselor DeGenova.
Present.
Counselor Fry.
Sorry, here.
Counselor Swanson.
Here.
Counselor Hardwick.
Present.
Counselor Weep.
Present.
Counselor Boyle.
Present.
Counselor Dominato. Counselor Dominato. Counselor Bly.
Present.
And Counselor Kirby Young.
Present.
The meeting has quorum. Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. First, we acknowledge that we are on the traditional unceded territories of Musqueam, Squamish, and Slaveltooth. And thank them for having care for this land and are enjoying working together with them in partnership as we build this great city together. I also want to take a moment to recognize our staff. They're doing tremendous work during this trying time of COVID-19 and especially during this very busy month of July. Thanks to the clerks and all the staff who are presenting and contributing here this evening. Before we begin, I have some announcements. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or oppose the recommendations and, and I'll prompt this as we go through the night, if they're a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates and the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. And I'll do my best to call out the numbers associated with your name on the list to give you a sense of where you are in the list. Any comments on agenda items should be submitted in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca. That's publichearing@vancouver.ca. Speakers with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight 20-second delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentations, please say the word "next." Finally, council will recess and reconvene the meeting on July 10th from 9:30 to 5:00 p.m. by electronic means to continue to hear from speakers. A reminder that council's role at public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means that council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heretics designation. So not the policy surrounding this, but the actual merits of the rezoning application before us. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of speakers. After hearing from speakers, council may first, the first option is to approve in principle the application. The second is to refuse the application. The third is defer the application for further consideration. So now I'll turn it over to clerk to read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by IBI Group to amend CD1 708 Comprehensive Development District for 2538 Birch Street, formerly 1296 West Broadway to permit a taller mixed-use building, 27 stories with a mezzanine, with approximately 258 secured rental housing units, of which 22% of the residential floor area will be reserved as moderate income units. An increase to the permitted floor space ratio from 7.07 to 10.55 and an increase to the maximum height from 52.14 meters to 86.19 meters are proposed.
If I can just interrupt you there for a second, clerks, I just hear some background noise. If counselors could make sure they're on mute as well as the planning staff that are in attendance, that would be great. Thanks. Please continue.
The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. 515 pieces of correspondence in support, 362 pieces of correspondence in opposition, and two pieces of correspondence regarding other aspects related to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 3:00 p.m. today.
Great. Thank you very much. So we have Sarah Crawley here, the planner from the rezoning centre, who has a presentation for us. And following that, we can hear from the applicant and then any questions from council, the staff, or applicants. And just a reminder to council, because we have so many speakers, we may want to hold questions for staff until after we hear from speakers, but that's up to you. I'll just remind you as we go through. Okay, so am I turn it over to Ms. Crawley? Crawley.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
That's great. Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor and council. This is Sarah Crawley here. I am the rezoning planner for this application, which proposes an amendment to the existing CD1 at 2538 Birch Street, which is formerly 1296 West Broadway. This is to permit a mixed-use development under the Modern Income Rental Housing Pilot Programme, commonly known as the MERC programme. To begin, the site, which is currently vacant and shown in the red box, is located in the Fairview area at the southeast corner of West Broadway and Birch Street. It is currently zoned CD1 708, which permits a 17-story mixed-use development under the former Rental 100 application that was approved by council and subsequently enacted in 2018. As seen in this slide, the area along West Broadway and Granville Street is primarily zoned C3A, Commercial District, and supports commercial activities such as the sale of goods and services, together with other compatible uses like residential use. The area to the south is zoned RM3, which is a multifamily dwelling district, and it is currently developed with low-rise condos and rental apartment buildings. So this is an aerial view showing the vacant site looking north. The bus icons indicate the fact that West Broadway currently contains the highest frequency transit in the city with four local bus routes and the 99B line, which is the busiest bus route in Canada and the USA combined and carries approximately 61,000 passengers daily in its peak. This 18,000-square-foot site is strategically located to avail of these current transit services as well as other future transit options being brought forward under the forthcoming Broadway subway project. The site is also located adjacent to moderately high buildings. For example, there's residential buildings located adjacent to the east that range approximately between 127 to 138 feet high. There are office buildings to the north, Kitty Corner is 156 feet, and across Broadway is 125 feet high respectively. Across the lane and to the rear of the site, it transitions into the RM3 zone with the residential and rental apartments as described earlier. This slide displays the amenities and services within up to a 15-minute walk from the site. Of note is the site's proximity to Vancouver General Hospital, VGH, to the east, which is a 10-minute walk. The Seawall and its parks, a 15-minute walk to the north, as well as cultural venues on and near Granville Street, approximately 10 minutes away to the west. Some childcare and schools are also identified here. And there are overall 12 elementary schools and five secondary schools within the Broadway area overall. Staff note that enrollments at the local elementary schools within the immediate vicinity are oversubscribed currently, with future capacity anticipated in the coming years. The city coordinates with Vancouver School Board regularly by sharing both short-term as well as long-term land use projections so that school capacity is accurately forecasted for. As shown on this slide, the project site is located strategically between two future Broadway subway stations, a project that is currently being led by the province. These stations near the site are the South Granville Station, which is two blocks to the west, and the VGH Fairview Station, four blocks away at Laurel Street to the east. The new subway infrastructure will greatly embellish and complement the existing bus services currently operating along Broadway and open up further multimodal options for residents in the area once completed in 2025. After extensive public consultation, council approved the Housing Vancouver Strategy in November 2017. The strategy seeks to develop 20,000 new secured rental units, of which 4,000 are specifically targeted for moderate income households. In 2017, council also approved the MERC programme, and that is the enabling policy for this project. Under this programme, up to 20 proposals can be considered. This application will be the ninth MERC project for council's consideration to date. If approved, the moderate income units created will then equate to 230 moderate income units citywide. So this slide shows the purpose-built rental between 2017 and 2026. As you can see on the chart here, the city is behind targets for purpose-built market and below-market rental. As of July 2020, the city has achieved 20% of its Housing Vancouver purpose-built rental target, when the city should have approved up to at least 35% by now. As of July 2020, the city has approved eight rental projects under the Modern Income Rental pilot, and that's delivering 879 rental units, including 173 developer-owned below-market rental units to date. This application is proposing to amend the site under this MERC programme, the intent of which is to encourage new rental units, secured rents affordable, to moderate income households, otherwise known as the missing middle. And it's those renters who earn between $30,000 to $80,000 per year. Applications under this policy must secure a minimum of 20% of the proposed residential floor area for moderate income units. I'd like to note that this particular application is exceeding this requirement by providing 22% of the residential floor area for moderate income units. Under this programme, policy proposals were selected based on a number of criteria, including affordability, the number of new rental units created, the minimal impact on existing renters, proximity to transit and amenities, and neighbourhood fit. Under the MERC programme, the CD1 site could be considered for redevelopment, given that there is no displacement of existing tenants. In this slide, staff would like to provide some context here around the timeline on the intake and selection process for this MERC pilot and the subsequent staff support it received to proceed forward under the pilot. As described in my slides earlier, the MERC programme was approved by council in 2017. During the MERC proposal intake window, an expression of interest was received from the applicant on February 16th, 2018. An initial response was provided by staff on March 19th, 2018, indicating a "not right now" response, noting the Broadway Plan and emerging directions as a key indicator. Finally, on June 12th of 2018, a follow-up letter was sent to the applicant inviting them to participate in this limited pilot. Staff would like to note that on June 20th, 2018, the Broadway Plan interim rezoning policy was approved by council. Staff are confident that the project meets the framework established under Policy 1, as you see at the bottom of the screen. And this is why the application is being presented to council for consideration today. This slide lists the details of the existing CD1 approved by council back in January 2018 and subsequently enacted that same year. Note that the 17-story mixed-use building proposed all rental units to be at market rates. Moderate income units were not a feature at this time under the Rental 100 policy. An FSR of 7.07 with a height just above 171 feet were approved under the former application. This current application proposes to amend that enacted CD1 to permit the development of a 282-foot-tall mixed-use building with 258 secured rental units, including 22% of the residential floor space secured as moderate income rental units, which equates to approximately 58 units. An increase from an FSR of 7.07 to 10.55 and a height from 170 feet to 282 feet are proposed. Retail will be featured at grade with a small public plaza and room for a private patio fronting Birch Street. On the fourth level and roof, 5,000 square feet of outdoor amenity space for the residents of the building is also proposed. The affordable moderate income units will feature on many levels of the building, with current plans showing that the units will be on levels 4 to 11. Similar to Rental 100 project, public art is required and is being proposed here. You'll see more details on that from the applicant team shortly. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to the aftermath of the COVID-19 emergency, this project will contribute approximately 900 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the lifetime of the construction. This slide demonstrates the affordability comparisons between renting and owning an apartment in Vancouver. Based on CMHC data, ownership of an average-priced unit on the west side of Vancouver, as shown on the extreme right column, ranges from over 2,800 per month for a studio to over 8,500 per month for a three-bedroom unit. These ownership costs are based and calculated using BC assessment data and following assumptions such as recent sale prices, down payments, mortgage rates, and monthly strata fees and property taxes. For those eligible for the moderate income units in this building, renters will be paying on average between $950 for a studio to $2,000 for a three-bed unit per month. That is indicated on the left column. All renters who earn between $30,000 to $80,000 per year are welcome and eligible to apply for a moderate income unit. Renting a new rental unit on the west side, that is a non-moderate income unit, equates to paying approximately $800 a month up to $3,700 for a three-bedroom unit, as shown in the middle column. To own a home in the west side means that a person would have to have an average household income of $112,000 to over $340,000 per annum to afford the payments. Therefore, as shown on this slide, both moderate and market rental rates are well below the monthly cost of ownership. If approved, all units will be secured through a housing agreement, which would prohibit the stratification and separate sales of individual units. The agreement would also limit the rates at which these rents for the moderate income units may be increased, even on a change of tenant. Changes to the DCL law were approved by council on November 26th, 2019, and that allows projects which provide a minimum of 20% of the floor area for moderate income households to qualify for a DCL waiver. This application, which proposes 58 units with rents between the range of $950 to $2,000, as shown, qualifies for that DCL waiver. Rents for the remaining 200 market units will be based on the market conditions in the area, which I described in my earlier slide. The moderate income units will be eligible to people who earn between a range of $13,000 to $80,000 per year, as we had said, and could include people who work in professions such as the medical field, dental assistants, healthcare assistants, and those working as transit drivers, et cetera. Many of these professions were deemed essential during the recent COVID-19 emergency. Some other examples of professions are also shown on this slide. While rents in market units may not be affordable to all Vancouver residents, the DCL waiver helps enable development of much-needed new secured rental housing and test the delivery of secured vacancy control below-market rental units by private for-profit developers. A pre-application open house led by the applicant team was held in November 2018 and was attended by approximately 96 people. Following the submission of the rezoning application, a city-hosted open house was held last year in June 2019 and was attended by 440 people. The application drawings and details were made available online following the application submission, along with my contact information, website, and a forum to submit feedback. In total, we received approximately 600 pieces of feedback from the public. Additionally, staff are aware of an independent online petition that was started to oppose the project. Please note that this petition was not sent for the attention of staff. Regarding public feedback, we certainly received a variety of comments throughout the review of this application and at the open house. Comments were categorized and sorted to understand the key themes of support and concern and are presented for you in further detail in the council report. To summarize, there was a strong message of support, particularly around the level of affordability being proposed from potential renters and employers in the area who were seeking more affordable rental options, either for themselves or for their workers in the Broadway area. Those in support also felt that the density proposed was appropriate for the area, given the opportunity being brought forward through the Broadway subway project. Concerns raised primarily centered around height, shadowing, neighbourhood fit of the proposed development, particularly in light of the Broadway planning work. To speak to some of the concerns we heard from the neighbourhood regarding those issues like height, density, and shadowing, I'd like to hand it over to my colleague Paul Chang, who is a senior development planner on this project and who conducted a detailed urban design analysis. Paul, over to you.
Thank you, Sarah. I just want to make sure everyone can hear me clearly.
Yes, we can. Thank you very much. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Next slide. I'm Paul Chang, Senior Development Planner of the Housing Priorities Team. Staff would like to provide a brief comparative analysis of the proposed building height, its form, and its shadowing effects on the surrounding neighbourhood. This first slide, this graphic shows the height and profile of the proposed 28-story building in comparison to that of the 17-story building, which was previously approved by council under the Rental 100 rezoning policy. In both graphics, a red dashed line delineates the expected building profile expected under the C3A zoning, as seen along the Broadway property line. As you can see, this profile shows a slender tower element accompanied by a low podium. In the C3A zoning, the building form is deliberately not a continuous high street wall. Instead, the base zoning expects a carefully sculpted form that guarantees a low podium element to allow the penetration of a large slot of direct sunlight through the site and onto the Broadway public realm, and which also guarantees a wide amount of open sky when viewed from the pedestrian level, front Broadway, and other nearby streets. As shown in these graphics, in both the 17-story and 28-story rezoning versions for the site, the lowest podium portion has generally been kept intact, while the tower component has been permitted to extrude to heights greater than what the base zoning allowed. The tower, however, maintains its overall slenderness measured in the east-west direction to minimize the width of the tower's shadow during the midday hours. The point staff want to make here is that even though the shadow of the tower well extends past the width of Broadway, it is a slender shadow, and furthermore, it is the low height of the complementing podium that ensures a rich, bright, and sunny environment on the public realm of Broadway. Next slide, please. Here, we would like to review the shadowing effects of the proposal over the course of an entire year. These graphics were provided by the applicant as a requirement of their application. We will start at springtime. This shadow study is taken during the spring equinox. The grey shading represents the shadows cast by existing towers on Broadway. The yellow shading represents shadows cast by the 17-story version that council previously approved. And finally, the pink shading represents the additional shadow resulting from the 28-story proposal, which is what council is deliberating on tonight. Firstly, please note that around noon time, the study demonstrates how the lower podium allows a slot of direct sunlight onto the north portion of Broadway. Notice how the other properties on the same block, which were developed under the base C3A zoning, have also provided the same low podium forms. Together, the developments form an orchestrated final result with a series of wide shafts of sunlight onto the Broadway public realm. of sunlight onto the Broadway public realm. Now let's look at the tower shadow. We can see here that around noon time, the shadow cast by the 17-story building, rendered in yellow, is already extending well past the entire width of Broadway. I can say here with confidence that even a 12-story tower permitted under the base C3A zoning would have extended past the north sidewalk on Broadway. This, in a nutshell, represents one of the major tenets of Vancouverism. The idea that there is a positive effect on the Broadway public realm by trading off increased shadowing from a tower element into the residential neighborhood north of Broadway with decreased shadowing from a lower podium. Embedded in that design move is the understanding that towers will produce some shadowing on the residential neighborhood north of Broadway. Next slide. This graphic shows how during summer solstice, three months later, when the sun is in its highest pathway of the year, the shadows cast by the buildings on Broadway are quite short. We all know from experience that during high summer, it is likely not direct sunlight we are looking for on the Broadway sidewalk. But please take note that even the pink shadow cast by the 28-story tower does not incur much past the full width of Broadway. Next slide, please. Three months later, we are at fall equinox, and the shadow performance is almost identical to that of spring equinox. The main point here is that for an entire six months of the year, from spring to fall, the shadows being cast by the proposal and its extent into the surrounding neighborhood will be as what you see here or less. Next slide, please. Winter solstice comes after fall equinox, and of course, we begin to approach the darker months, when the sun's pathway becomes quite low, when the days are very short, and we all feel the need to go outside to take in the limited amount of natural light that is available. This slide represents the darkest and shortest day of the year, and let's all remember that by around mid-February, things start to slowly get noticeably brighter. But here, during December 21st, when the sun's height reaches to no more than 18 degrees above the horizon, the noonday shadow cast by this tower will extend over three times its height. In fact, due to the fact that the topography slopes down as we move northward towards Falls Creek, the shadows cast will be even longer than that. The shadows are so long that the framing of the diagrams have had to zoom out to show its full extent. An interesting point, however, which you can only see if you strain your eyes on the 12:00 p.m. and 1:00 p.m. diagrams, is that even though the sun is so low off the horizon, there still remains a couple of slots of direct sunlight hitting the north sidewalk of Broadway on this block. It's represented by a little patch of light between the yellow shadow and the gray ones cast by the neighboring towers due east. Next slide, please. Not to end on a dark note, I'd like to end with the repeat of the spring equinox, which inevitably comes after our deep winter. Because staff here want to clearly acknowledge that it is absolutely true that a taller building will cast longer shadows onto neighboring properties to the north, but it must also be pointed out that the longer shadows will only be cast during a portion of the year, during the darkest winter months, say from mid-November to mid-February, and that as we approach spring and then summer, the shadows quickly recede to something very short for at least half of the year. In summation, while private properties will experience some shadow impact during the darker months of the year, the overall public realm of Broadway will achieve some sunlight whenever the sun is actually out all year round. Next slide? Or did we take that one? Okay. I just wanted to end on this part. In the recommended conditions of the report, staff will be seeking design improvements to the overall layouts of the proposed dwelling units. We have prepared a set of slides should council be seeking clarification after this presentation. And over back to Sarah.
So I just want to touch back on the comments we received from the public. Staff are aware, both from the comments submitted to us directly and from some of the publicity the site has attracted, that certain members of the community feel that this project is too premature, given the fact that the Broadway plan work is still underway. And staff would just like to take an opportunity to point out a few things. As described earlier, the MIRP program was approved back in 2017, and indeed, it is a limited project to 20 projects overall. An amendment to an already enacted CD1 rezoning is independent of the long-range planning work that will be created under the Broadway plan. As per typical protocol here in the rezoning center, we have reviewed the application in detail and can see that this project aligns in a number of ways to best practices in urban planning. Transit-oriented development, or TOD, for example, has become a very important issue of late, as we in the world grapple with the challenges of the climate emergency. By placing higher densities near easily accessible transit hubs, we're providing the future residents with an opportunity to travel for work and leisure in a more sustainable way. Not only that, but this project makes a notable contribution to the MIRP units and the city targets to deliver below-market units. The amazing feature of MIRP is that those rents will not increase on change of tenants and will remain very affordable for the life of the building for those eligible people within the $30,000 to $80,000 per year range, many of whom, as I indicated earlier, could be engaged in essential work considering the proximity to Vancouver, general hospitals, and transit hubs, like healthcare, transit workers, and who did such an incredible job in keeping our city operating during the pandemic. In conclusion, staff support this application. Subject conditions in Appendix B, as it is consistent with the moderate-income rental housing pilot program and one of the 20 selected for the pilot. It would contribute a total of 258 secured rental housing units, including 58 units at moderate-income rates, all towards achieving the city's housing goals. As identified in the Housing Vancouver Strategy, and giving people and families more of an affordable way to live and work in an area that is and will be further well-connected by multimodal options in the central location along West Broadway. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everybody who took the time to provide comments on this project, and staff are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation, and just going to ask now if the applicant is here to speak to the application. Might be on mute.
Can you hear us?
We can hear now, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Your Worship, council, and city staff for considering our proposal at 2538 Birch Street, under the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program. My name's Tony Papa John. I'm the president of Jameson Development Board. Next slide, please.
We're just waiting for your slides to connect. There we are. We have the title slide up now. We can see it, Mr. Papa John.
Okay. Next slide, please.
And there is a bit of delay for those who are looking at home, so it'll be 20 seconds for those slides to become public, but they are up now, and we've got your first slide here.
Okay. I am born and raised in Vancouver and have lived in this city all of my life. We are a local family-run business. Our office is a 10-minute walk from the project site. I also live about 10 minutes away from it. This proposal is in line with our company values. We are committed to supporting diverse and inclusive communities through socially, economically, and environmentally sustainable projects. City staff have shared all of the technical aspects to illustrate the what and the how of this project. I want to take a few minutes to talk about the why. As councils are aware, we are already approved for a 17-story market rental building with location under the Rental 100 program. We were getting ready to move forward with that proposal when the MIRP program was introduced. We have been a proponent of mid-market rental housing for many years. In fact, we worked with the City of North Vancouver to deliver their first rental building that included moderate-income rental units, so we were pleased to respond to the City of Vancouver's MIRP program proposal. Over the past year, many people who live, work, or operate small businesses in Vancouver have told me they think that this project should proceed, given its location and that it's in the area of Vancouver, which is a major employment center of the province. In fact, I'm told it's the second most important employment center in the province, and its proximity to the upcoming Broadway Skytrain line. Additionally, the city's urban design panel approved the project by a margin of 8 to 2. Next slide, please. The building will be accessible around the corner from VGH, within walking distance to dozens of other employment centers, and easily accessible to downtown. It sits between two future Broadway Skytrain stations and cycling routes in all directions. It's also built to modern standards with elevators, wide hallways, and other features that will benefit people with mobility challenges and support people to age in place. It will provide affordable housing for residents, with more than 22% of the homes reserved in perpetuity for moderate-income tenants. That exceeds the minimum requirements of a MIRP. It's an inclusive, family-friendly MIRP unit sprinkled throughout the building, share the same entrance and amenities as the other residents, and have the same furnishings in their units. The building will be pet-friendly, complete with pet washing stations for residents. It will provide new choices for people with four-legged family members, and it will help build community by bringing 258 new households to the area to support local businesses and services. At the base of the building, there will be two floors of retail and office space, along with a community plaza at street level, to help build a sense of place. We heard suggestions from staff and the community that are looking to develop resilient retail that serves the local community. Next slide, please. Many people have asked us how we can make it feasible to develop MIRP on the west side. I have to tell you, it's not easy, but we're committed to finding opportunities to provide attainable workforce rental housing so people can live closer to where they work. I mean, first responders, central workers, retail employees, and service workers, the people we rely on every day. We've been steadfastly committed to this MIRP proposal for over two years. We're encouraged by all the support we have received. Frankly, retail businesses, employers, and our future residential tenants are asking us to build more projects on it. Next slide, please. As the events of the COVID pandemic have unfolded, we believe a project like this is more important than ever, for the jobs it will create while it's being built, and for the employment that it will support, and the homes it will provide once it is finished. As a long-term owner, I'm asking my team to make this building even more resilient, such as enhanced air filtration systems to screen out wildfire particulate molecules and bring in more fresh air into the building. Contactless elevator buttons, wider pathways, and minimizing pinch points in common areas. We're also looking at antibacterial surfaces, like using more brass and copper for high-touch areas like doorknobs. We believe this is a great project. We are proud of what we've been able to do here, and we hope that you will approve it. Thank you in advance for your time and your questions this evening. Now I will ask IBI Group, the project architects, they will say a few words about the unique features of this building and the sustainability features, and after that, Musquiam Weaver, artist and knowledge keeper, Deborah Sparrow, will say a few words about her art installation on our building. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. And thank you, Your Worship, council, and city staff. My name is also Tony from IBI, and I will be speaking of the architecture of this building. The building is located at the southeast corner of Broadway and Birch, with retail and office space in the podium and rental housing units above. As the tower goes up, the foreplate of the tower decreases in size, creating a tapering tower form. This tapering happens six times, creating roof decks, terraces for people to use, the This building design is different from what we are used to seeing in Vancouver residential towers, by using brick laid in a vertical manner. This gives the building a distinct vertical expression and allow us to manage the glass area, which leads to a greener, more sustainable building, and allowing for a more continuous exterior insulation envelope. This building is designed to meet the City of Vancouver's green building policy as a low-emissions green building. And the other sustainable features are listed to the right, including integrated rainwater management plant. For Broadway, the street will be activated with retail and street trees, with opportunities for outdoor seating. For residences, there are an abundant amount of outdoor many spaces, including urban agricultural planters and dog walk spaces, as well as other outdoor activity spaces. There are also large patios for family-oriented units and roof decks. On the very top of the building, there are more outdoor many spaces with adjacent indoor amenity spaces. There is also a playground with a full-height barrier around it for safety and wind protection This is an exciting project for the city, where it will bring new retail spaces to Broadway, a corner plaza, and restaurant or tapas spaces with outdoor patio spaces along Birch, providing a linkage to the residential community self-worth. This also brings people to the focal point, which is the public art, which is at the corner of the building, as well as by the residential lobby entry. At this point, we would like to welcome Deborah Sparrow, who is a Musquiam Weaver, a knowledge keeper, and the public art artist on this project. We're not sure if Deborah will be able to keep phoning in, and we asked her to give her the numbers and roads to phone in on. I'm not sure if you have that. Speaking to the clerk, perhaps?
Clerks, do we have Ms. Sparrow on the line? Or perhaps the moderator? Clerks?
Mayor Stewart, this is the clerk here in the chamber. We are just checking to see if we can find the person on the line. It does not appear. It does not appear to be on the WebEx list.
Okay, I'll let him know. Okay, thanks. If I could ask the councillors just to keep on mute until we have a question round?
Point of procedure.
Okay, councillor Weave?
This speaker says that she's trying to contact us but can't get through.
Okay. Perhaps you could forward her on to the clerk using the chat function or email. Perhaps a direct line would help. Okay, councillor Weave?
Thanks.
Perhaps I can go back to the applicant. Is there another section of the presentation you could talk about while we're waiting for Ms. Sparrow to join us?
We get the number presented. This would be, no, she would have been concluding our presentation.
Okay, concluding your presentation.
I have a point of information, Mr. Mayor.
At this point, you need the floor for a point of information, but you can ask a point of procedure or privilege?
Well, I suppose it would be privilege. This relates to the clerk having read the note of correspondence at the top of the meeting. I don't recall having heard anything about petitions, paper petitions that I understand came in, I saw from an internal exchange.
Okay, I think I would leave that as a question to staff after we finish the presentation. So that would be something you could ask when we're there. We're almost there.
Okay, thank you. Just maybe heads up, I'm going to be looking for an explanation.
Thanks. And if you can, I don't see anybody on the question queue, and those are coming up. So if you wanted to put yourself on the question queue.
I had put myself on, but...
I was. There was some left over from this afternoon that I cleared the queues. So if folks want to speak, please put yourself on. There's lots of time to speak on this one because we'll be here for many days, so... Councillor Bly, go ahead.
I just want to note that the request to speak changed over to amendments to full-speak area plan for Area Ten B. And I was on the queue as well, and it seemed to switch. So I'm not sure if we're going to bounce between queues. It's happened before.
Yes, I had the main queue accidentally signed up. Now we're on the question queue, and I'll move over to the main queue. That will happen once we move and second the motions, the staff report sometime next week, I would imagine. So I'll be on this queue for quite a long time, and I'll leave this over here.
Oh, yeah, it's just gone back, so that's great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And I don't think we have, just hearing from the clerk, that we, I don't think we have, do I have any contact? Yeah, so we still don't have any contact for Ms. Sparrow?
No, we tried to call her and maybe put the cellphone beside our speaker here, but she's not answering her phone, so in these two minutes...
Okay, the clerk is also contacting the speaker. So again, councillor, this is an important conclusion. So I'm going to just recess for five minutes, just to let the clerk contact and get the speaker on. So it is my clock, six fifty-three, so let's come back at six fifty-eight. And I will, and I'll let you know, I'll come back a little early to let you know we're going to start. Thanks very much.
And the clerk's got the number?
And applicants, we can hear you, so if you want to mute as well for the five minutes, that would be...
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We've had our five-minute break now. So clerks, I'm going to ask if, do you have Ms. Sparrow on the line?
It's the clerk here, Mayor Stewart. And we made contact with her, and we gave her the telephone number to call. I'm just reading here. And the moderator is, I'm understanding the moderator is just about to give us an update.
Okay, so again, moderator, do you have an update?
We don't have her on our list, actually. We do have a few callers that just... Sorry?
She wouldn't be on the list. She wouldn't be on the list. She's calling in as part of the applicant group, and her name is Deborah Sparrow.
Yeah, we have about four lines that just joined. We're just trying to get their names at the moment.
Okay, so I'm going to check back with you in just a minute, and then if she's not on, we're going to continue.
Okay.
Councillor, we're still having, we have, the clerk has been in contact with Ms. Sparrow, and there is some difficulty. So what I'm going to suggest is we move along. But if Ms. Sparrow was able to join, then perhaps the councillor might be able to ask a question that would allow her to present, unless somebody else on the applicant team...
Hello?
Okay. Hello, Ms. Sparrow, is that you?
Yeah, who, I need it.
Okay, great. So I don't know if you could see the slide, but we have a slide of your artwork up, and the public is looking at that. So did you have anything you wanted to say to councillor?
I surely do. I'd first like to apologize for that because I am very not up to par on all this. And I actually can't see you because I'm not, I didn't plug in that way. However, I just thought I'd sort of start by saying that, you know, wanted, hello?
Hello, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Honored mayor and councillor, I want to hold my hands up to you before I start my few words I have to say about the artwork, to just hold my hands up again to all of you for all of the wonderful, amazing work you've all done through this last three months, which has challenged us as human beings and brought us to a place we have never experienced before. And you've done amazing jobs. And for my people here in Musqueam, I just want to say hi, chut, to you and hold my hands up to you. It's brought us to, really to this place that we have been talking about prior to myself, the wonderful people who were ahead of me. I was listening to them all talk about how important it is in our city to have places that we can come to when these situations arise. In fact, I would like to share with you that every night I walked to my river, and I took sunsets as they went down and shared them with my friends in the city who lived in apartments in places where they couldn't go. And it makes us really, really evaluate who we are as people. And I'm really honored to be able to come out into the city as much as I have over the last two years, not just as an artist, but as someone who is reaching out to say, let us take hands together in this amazing place we're living in on the west coast in Vancouver, Musqueam, Squamish, and Flawitut, and find ways of intertwining who we are as human beings, not just people looking for, you know, the future, which is uncertain. And when it is, it's these homes that we want to come to. And when I was a little girl, which I used to get on the bus and take my trip towards the Bomax sign, and get off there, and then go stay with my auntie who was living there at the time. And I always marked it by the Bomax sign. And I didn't know that later in my life I would actually be working in a direction to be inclusive to the beauty and integrity of my people through a responsibility that's been given to me, to share that visual beauty that I have been so honored to work with the Papa Johns and the builders and architects who are representing this beautiful building. It's always been a goal of mine, as you know, all of you, I worked with the mural painters for the city of Vancouver, the mural fest. And the goal there was to make our way through the city, wrapping the city in the beauty of the blankets that I'm ever so passionate and loved with, that is an integral part of our history and our people. But I want to be inclusive to say that in a time like we live in, in this world, we're all Weavers. We're all coming from a history that is very old and ancient. And it was my goal to not stop until I wrap the city in the beauty of the people. And at that time, I never thought too much about the buildings, but I felt at a little bit of a loss when I would go downtown and see a lot of glass and a lot of concrete. And I would say to myself, who is the city? Who is the city of Vancouver, and how does it reflect itself? And over the years, I thought, well, maybe I can contribute in a small way or a large way in bringing the beauty of all, when we look around the world, history repeats itself through the artists and through the beauty that they have offered to each and every city. And I watched the Silk Road, and I saw such magnificent buildings with such beauty reflected in them. And I came back to my home and said, how do we, or can we, at least make the first efforts towards doing that in our city? And that's why I answered the call for this project. And coincidentally, or maybe there is no coincidences, it is not far from the Bomax sign. And so I've come full circle back home again. And when the fellow talked about the shadows, maybe in the times that we feel like we're in a shadow, and we did for three months, we can approach a building such as this and see the beauty of the work that goes along the side. a building such as this and see the beauty of the work that goes along the side of it, and then is being integrated further now, uh, along the side, or maybe even in the coffee shop, that it brings us a sense of grounding when we look at it, and we need that in the life that we're living today. And so that's why I am so interested in working on this project and bringing a little beauty and integrity to that building, which is already in my, in my view, by listening to them and seeing what they're doing, being aware of what can we do to be sustainable in our communities and in our buildings. So I just feel really strong that this will be a landmark for the beginning of what may come, but that we be inclusive to all of each other in times like this, that we're all in this together now, and it may reflect, um, a, a way of looking at our city that is inclusive to everyone, because when you really look at that design, and I hope you can see it, um, you're not really sure where it comes from, and sometimes when you look at our blankets, you're not really sure where they came from either, before you got to know us. In fact, when we were at Expo eighty-six, we had just begun our journey of bringing the blankets back to, back home, back to the visibility of our people, to be able to stand on them. People thought we were from South America, people thought we were Mexican, because no one knew such beauty laid in the land of Vancouver. And so that's the ground marks that we wanna share with you, that, again, these patterns reflect all of us, because we can find them in every culture. And I've said this before, and I'll say it again, the great Maya Angelou says, we're as much alike as we are different, so let's celebrate that. And that's why I love to work with anyone who is open to, to doing that. And so I wanna hold my hands up to, um, all of you who are, um, making decisions on this, because I think it's important for all the people who will reside there, and enjoy, and hopefully enjoy the work that's on the outside of the building. So thank you very much for listening, and I'm sorry that I had a hard time getting through here, um, uh, but.
Thank you.
Yep, so thank you.
Thank you so much for persevering, and, uh, counsel, in case, uh, you, you were looking at your presentation screen that we see internally, uh, that the right side wasn't on, but just rest assured that the public, uh, uh, could see the artwork if you, and that's on the, uh, orange cone, uh, view on your monitor. Um, thanks so much, uh, Ms. Sparrow, and anything else from the applicant before we move to questions, uh, from counsel?
No, this is Mark Gropkin, this concludes our comments to counsel, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks so much, and just to let you know, you're still sharing your screen, so the slide that we're viewing right now internally is, uh, project statistics, uh, so, um, I just might ask clerk to, uh, just to advise you on, on how to either, yeah, there we go, okay, thanks very much, and, uh, thank you, so I'm gonna move on to Counselor Hardwick, who has questions, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Well, as I mentioned before, I'm really asking the clerk for clarification on correspondence, um, you know, I've been, uh, made aware of two petitions, one for six hundred and eighty-five, I think, and the other for fourteen hundred and seventy-seven, um, and I just, um, again, I'm, I'm kinda concerned because of all of the, um, you know, different, when we're receiving all this correspondence, it's supposed to show us the, you know, the broadest perspective of, of the public input, and.
Yep, so you, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking, because it was not reflected in the opening comments by the clerk, and I would like further clarification on public input, uh, thank you.
And you have a specific inquiry about two petitions?
The petitions, yes.
Okay, thank you, 'cause there seem to be a few, so, um, clerks, can you give us any updated information on petitions?
It's the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and yes, in the correspondence that was provided to counsel as well as uploaded for the public, there was one petition that had six hundred and eighty-five signatures on it. There was a second petition that was an electronic petition, we couldn't see the signatures, um, but it had indicated it was over a thousand signatures.
Okay, um, and, okay, does that answer your, uh, question, Counselor Hardwick?
I guess we just counted them as one piece of correspondence, even though they carried fourteen hundred and seventy-seven signatures.
I think we just followed the, the usual procedure.
Yeah, obviously, uh, the usual procedure needs some work, thank you.
Okay, thanks, uh, Counselor Dominado, uh, for the, for the applicant or staff?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor, um, and yes, I have a question to the applicant. I just wanted to follow up, um, thank you for your presentation, appreciate your comments about being born and raised in Vancouver and family-owned business. I've heard from, um, a number of builders that, um, that to develop, uh, to do, uh, housing under MRRP is quite challenging, in fact, from a financial standpoint, and you, as you mentioned, you were approved under the rental one hundred, and I'm just curious about what motivated you, um, personally, from a personal standpoint, to shift gears and, and do something under MRRP, um, because I, I understand it is quite challenging to make it all work, and so I'm just curious about your kind of personal motivation and drive to, um, go forward, or try to go forward under this model.
Well, um, first of all, um, Tony Papa John here speaking.
Hi, Tony.
We just saw this problem, uh, happening when we were renting apartments, and, you know, thirty, forty people showing up, uh, to rent one apartment, and mostly younger people, professionals, very good incomes, and, you know, we would have rented twenty, thirty, forty apartments that evening if we hadn't been rented. Um, we just thought there was a lack of product as well on the west side, and all over our city, and, uh, that motivated us. You know, we, um, real estate's a hobby for us as well as a profession, and we'd be studying around the world, San Francisco, New York, European cities, and this concept of workforce housing and people living and working, uh, instead of commuting for an hour or two hours. So, um, you know, we found this location, the Broadway subway was after that, but, you know, it's in between two stations, it's the second largest employment hub or economic generator in the province. Most of the buildings are forty, fifty, sixty years old, they don't have elevators, people are aging and having trouble getting up and down and inside, so we, we just saw this as an opportunity to, it's a building we wanna keep, it's a long-term investment, and, you know, we build the best building we can. It is challenging, you know, financing and finding these properties and doing it, so we just thought it was a good, uh, benefit for the community as well, and, you know, having people living and working and kids and everybody together in the same building.
Great, thank you for elaborating on that, I appreciate that.
That answers your question, sorry.
No, no, it, it does, and, and I appreciate that, that elaboration, I think it's important, uh, for people to understand. The other question I have is around, um, pets, um, we don't often see buildings, um, uh, that allow permit pets, I was just curious about that as well. Uh, again, is that about liability for you and, and public benefit and for residents? I just, uh, 'cause we don't.
We like pets, I know it's very difficult, we have, uh, you know, uh, all these, we're doing a couple of these buildings, they're pet-friendly, they're kid-friendly, uh, they're everything-friendly. We want people to be a reflection of society in our building, so we find that people who own, you know, dogs, cats, pets are grateful to have a place to live and, and, uh, that accepts their animal, and it's part of the family, so, and I find these tenants, you know, um, mostly are very good tenants, and they're long-term. It's, it's difficult in this city to find a combination that is accepting us of animals as well, so we think it's a good thing. I mean, I, we have a couple of dogs, and it's a good, good thing to have, so we're open to pets, and in newer buildings, we're putting in these dog washes and things like that, so people have a place, as well as repairing their bike, a bike room, they can wash their pet, and those can, we would drop a car area too in this building, up on one of the.
Fantastic. Can I ask one last question before I run out of time, is just around the retail commercial grade, and will some of the, that, there be small floor plates? Because I've been hearing from sort of businesses that are just starting up, that it's more manageable in terms of leases if they have a small floor plate space, and sometimes it's, they're too large in some of the new builds, uh, so will the.
The one on the bird side, we have a little patio there, we're talking to a restaurateur, we're having a little restaurant there, sort of breakfast, lunch, and dinner, uh, a place to, you know, have your coffee and your drink, he's just talking about a smaller space, about twelve, fifteen, nine hundred fifty. Uh, given this COVID thing, and, and a lot of the comments we got at the open houses and stuff, the area seems to be sort of grocery service deficient. There really isn't any, uh, major grocery store other than on candy, and then your iron and rubber, so, um, you know, we need to have an approved building before we go lease it, but we'll definitely be looking at something like a grocer, uh, there, uh, maybe a medical clinic on the second floor, stuff like that. We're looking for more service, uh, things, you know, we're gonna have hopefully about five hundred people within this building, if this is approved.
Thanks so much, and we're, we're at our six minutes, and I'm gonna move on to Counselor Bly. Again, mind your counselors to just start your final question, giving your, the respondent enough time to answer. Counselor Bly, go ahead, uh, up to five.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and, um, thanks to both staff and the applicant for the presentation. I just, uh, I'm gonna focus my questions initially with the applicant, because I think this is the only time we get to ask questions.
That's correct, yep.
Is there, is there any other MRRP projects that Jameson is working, uh, that Jameson is working on right now?
Um, we had one that was passed by your counsel in December last year.
I mean, two years.
Second in large. I know, these are the two that we have right now.
Great, thank you. Um, I just have a question around the previous application under rental one hundred for the hundred and fifty-three unit. I just, I'm curious if you have any ballpark breakdown of what the cost of a studio would have been in that application?
Pardon me? Sorry, could you just repeat that again?
I, I can, um, so the application under rental one hundred for a hundred and fifty-three units, your initial application for this site, I'm, I'm just curious on the, um, cost of the studio, uh, apartment under that application. Do you have a ballpark?
Um, you know, I think studios now in city Vancouver market are like sort of seventeen to nineteen hundred dollars.
I'm just wondering how, how they priced out under that application?
I, I can't remember the exact number, sorry, um, but, you know, that, those would be also three years from, from when, when the building would get passed, so I, I don't know, but, you know, typically they're around seventeen fifty to nineteen fifty a studio that's brand new and rented right now, in this particular.
I think for, yeah, I'm just trying to, I, I can, I can ask staff the same question, because, um, that information doesn't seem to be on hand, and I appreciate rents change over the years and things like that. Um, so I'll ask staff that question, and then, do you have any idea, um, the impact of, um, both the DCL and utilities, DCL waiver, if that was not an option as part of this, um, project, how that would have impacted your ability to deliver what you've been able to deliver under the MRRP?
Um, you know, it's a net dog, definitely a negative, uh, impact, and may, in some cases, depending on the building, stop you from delivering your product. It's very difficult.
It's difficult, okay, great, I just wanted to, there. And then the final question I have is around the average size for the three-bedroom unit, I didn't see that in the staff report.
Um, under the MRRP, there's a maximum size that you can deliver the unit, um, maybe the architect can talk it to at the MRRP, yeah.
The average size for the MRRP three-bedroom is seven eighty.
Seven hundred and eighty square feet?
Yes.
Okay, and then what about the two-bedroom?
And keep in mind, it's, uh, from the interior painting.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The numbers, the average that I'm giving you is the inside dimension, the painted paint.
Okay, that's okay, it's, it's just a ballpark, what about the two-bedroom?
Five eighty-five.
Five eighty-five, okay, and then my question, final, my last question is, could you just explain, this is probably for the architect, how the two- and three-bedroom divider walls, I, I read that the, for the family, um, designed unit, uh, there'll be some sort of convertible wall that could be opened up to give their bedroom, it's like to create more flex space or have siblings sleep in the same room and things like that, could you just explain how that works? Is that a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom in terms of this application? That's my last question.
Yeah, the only units I can think of that have these, these rooms would be, um, three-bedroom units, where the third room is in the, has the, uh, at the, is an, has an interior partition, um, and we designed these rooms to be flexible, um, in case someone doesn't need a three-bedroom or they wanna use it in an office, it's, it's, it's designed for it to be used as a, as an office or a bedroom.
Thanks very much.
Quite a privilege, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, uh, Counselor Gropkin?
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm having a very hard time hearing the applicant, there's a lot of echo, and I just wanted to identify that, 'cause I'm missing some of what they're saying, and I don't.
I think, uh, yes, I just asked the applicant, I think it's on your end, if you could speak, uh, into your phone a little more directly, or into the microphone, I'm not sure what your setup is there, but, uh, thanks very much, Counselor Boyle, up to five minutes.
Thanks, um, first of all, uh, I'm just hoping to clarify, um, did, can you just say the size for the three-bedroom, uh, moderate income units is seven hundred and something square feet?
Yes.
Okay, um, what's the size for the three-bedroom units that are, that are a market rate?
Let me try to find that, one second.
Okay. Um, and, uh, my other question for now to the, um, applicant is, uh, you mentioned this building is planned under the, um, low emission guidelines, is the, is the plan to have natural gas in the building, or for the heating and hot water to be all electric?
Um, there may be some backup natural gas, but, um, I think the, the, the cooking is electric, and, uh, there may be some, some natural gas-fired boilers, but obviously we have to meet greenhouse gas limits, so we need to finalize our energy models, and where we, you know, where we could allocate the, our greenhouse gas permit, so to speak.
Okay.
Um, to your question about the three-bedrooms, I don't have an average calculation, but I see that some of them are eight, seven, six, some are nine hundred, around that ballpark.
Okay, is that pretty average for new rentals these days? I'm, I'm just trying to imagine living with my two children in that size space, so, um, is, is that on the low end of average for, for new rental, or can you give us a bit of a ballpark on the size for those family units?
Well, it, it depends on what our client is wanting to, to do. So for the MRRP units, we are going with a lower area, for the market units, they would be larger, two bed, a large two-bedroom unit would be nine hundred.
Yeah.
And, uh, but we would probably not go that far, I mean, on that, the better size would be eight hundred, you know, generally speaking, or even smaller, even smaller, seven fifty, um, so it's all a function of what the program is that the client has for the project, and what we, and how we plan that.
Okay, fair enough, um, and then, can I just confirm, because this is a, a question that comes up on a variety of projects, the amenity space is, um, shared for all the, the market and moderate income units in the building?
Yes, it is.
And the.
All, all tenants in the building, all the residential tenants in the building, all of the amenity space, both indoor and outdoor.
Great. Okay, those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Clerk, for some reason I've lost my screen here, so if you could queue the next councillor question, that would be great.
Yes, Mayor Stewart, the next councillor is councillor Boyle just spoke, councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks councillor Kirby Young, up to five minutes and I'll let you know when you get close to five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My questions are for the applicant and I just want to be really clear. So I'll see some quick clarifying questions. The previous application under rental 100, that was fully market rental, is that correct? I just want to be explicitly clear.
Yes, it was, yes.
Okay. And following up on the line of questioning from my fellow councillors, were the units in that project larger than the units in this proposal?
Oh, I see it's similar. Yeah.
It's similar? Okay. Moving on to the next question for the three bedroom units that you indicated have cholesterol windows or partitions, are, what is the soundproofing or noise experience like for those compared to, say, a traditional bedroom that has doors and a wall as opposed to the partitions or the clear windows?
The roof, the roof, the partitions that are movable?
Oh, yeah. I'm wondering what the sound is like. Is it soundproofing? Is it similar or equivalent to if you have, you know, a traditional build with a door and a window or what's the soundproofing like?
Well, these are partitions within the suite between rooms.
Yes, I understand that.
Generally, they're not designed with any particular acoustic performance in mind, whether it's a fixed partition or movable partition. But you raised a good point perhaps in the, with the movable partition, we'll take a look and see how they get as good as a fixed partition.
Okay. If you don't have that available now, I'd be, I'm sure council will be happy to receive that information by follow up. And then my, my other question is really a sense, I think that, the question been asked around the commercial retail units. And then I think also is, what was the motivation for you to come back so quickly? I know councillor Dominado touched on this, but was it simply the timing of when the MRRR program rolled out, given that you had received your application approval for the prior rental 100 project so quickly? They just seemed to be very close together. So you just comment for me how that process sequenced out?
Well, when we started the process for the rental 100 building, the MRRR pilot program wasn't introduced yet. The hit came out just as we were finishing and getting ready to proceed with the rental 100 building. So we wanted to create, we think this is a more resilient answer to the housing than just the rental 100 building and wanted to participate in delivering these mid-market units. So you'll notice that the, there's a hundred and, you know, over half the units we're delivering with the increase in the building side are going to the MRRR. Yeah, over 50% of the building that we're adding is going to MRRR.
Okay. Was that a significant amount of additional time and cost to pivot and.
I mean, yeah.
Redesign the building and do that?
Yeah, sure. But, you know, we're committed to this. So we think it makes a better community and delivers more choices and a more resilient city and housing.
Okay. And you typically find that, you know, you think that this would be fully rented, given your experience of the market and the lineups that you mentioned you'd had sometimes on past projects?
Well, we've heard this through the open houses and stuff, how many people can't find accommodation that work in the area already. And I think with the addition of the subway too, it's even that much better for people to, even if they have to travel a short distance.
Okay. And then last question is just something that Mr. Papa John mentioned that resonated with me and that was when you had talked about, I think some of these perhaps in response to COVID, you'd sort of framed it about enhanced air filtration systems. I just wanted to clarify, was that something you were contemplating or something that you're definitely planning to?
Oh, no, we're looking at it right now actively and the building has a fairly high standard, Martin Brock, I think, of air quality, but we're looking at, you know, more robust filtering systems and all those sort of things and also high touch areas.
Okay, is that in direct response to COVID-19 or is that because you're on, you know, sort of one of the busiest bus lines or what prompted sort of the additional look into enhancing the?
Well, first was the traffic, you know, pollution and things like that. We're looking at that. And now we're on top of that. We're looking for enhanced filtration and air quality in the building anyway. We're on that track and then we're doing it. So we're not just looking at it, we're going to be doing it. This building will be very high standard for.
Thanks so much. That's the five minutes. Thank you. On to councillor Hardwick. Councillor Hardwick, you have about three minutes.
Yeah, and I'd like to be really quick. So to the applicant, I'd just like a really straight answer on the question following up from councillor Kirby Young. So you had a successfully approved rezoning under rental 100 for 17 stories. Did you go to the city and say, we've heard about this MRRR program coming down the pipe, or did the city come to you and say you might be interested in pivoting into MRRR? Which was it?
I don't know. The city started talking about MRRR and then we're interested in providing.
So it was the city then?
Councillor Hardwick, if you let the applicant finish, that'd be great.
No, I think the city publicized to the public that we're there working on this moderate income rental housing pilot program. We're interested in doing this. We had done it already in North Vancouver voluntarily with the city of North Vancouver and helped them develop their policy. So we were very excited when we heard the city of Vancouver was doing it and we actively approached the city.
Okay, so that answers my question. Sorry, I only have two minutes left. Thank you. So that you approached the city was the answer. My question.
I should go before.
Is, my question to staff is, again, just confirming about the MRRR program. I just want to confirm that this was brought in under the prior council, not this council, correct? I'll assume that's correct.
Hello councillor Hardwick, this is Sarah Crowley here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
You are correct. The MRRR program was approved by council in 2017.
And this was concurrent with, or roughly around the same time as the Housing Vancouver Strategy was approved and the, the MRRR program is a reflection of the targets that are contained in the Housing Vancouver Strategy, is that correct?
Yes councillor, Dan Garrison, Housing Policy. The MRRR program was brought in at more or less the same time that Housing Vancouver was adopted and does reflect the housing targets that are in Housing Vancouver.
Well, thank you, Mr. Garrison.
Specifically the targets for purpose built rental housing.
Great, and we will be looking forward to some updated data from planning in this respect by the end of July. So.
You just have 20 seconds.
All right, I'll click off then.
Okay, thanks. On to councillor Fry, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I guess starting off with some questions for the applicants and I always love to see the sort of pet friendly approach. I note that that didn't seem to appear on the UDP boards from around this time last year. Was that a recent decision then to add the pet friendly component and why?
No, we've had it right from the beginning.
But yes, since the UDP, we have further developed our design.
Okay.
We have added, yes.
Yeah, so and it was on the UDP, there was, there was 248 units with 53 of them as moderate income. So what was the change that allowed you to move up to the more units that you're proposing now? With 258 units?
It was just through design development.
Okay, so does that change your, the pro formas and the, and the size of the units and?
No, not necessarily. It was just more efficient, fine tuning the layout.
Okay. Okay, great. And then I'm just gonna ask a question of staff then. Oh, sorry, but before I go to, you're obviously sticking with the same path B for low emissions green buildings that you were proposing before, which seems to be indicated in the, in the referral report. Question for staff then, this project has, is being built as transit oriented development and I note that there's 117 residential parking units and another 60 commercial parking units. Is that consistent with urban design and planning practices for transit oriented development in a high frequency transit area?
Yeah, so right now, this is John Treckie from Engineering. The parking bylaw currently in this area doesn't have any maximums for residential rates. Our minimum rates, which the applicant is proposing to meet, reflect generally lower parking requirements for rental and that's based on a combination of just lower car ownership amongst renters generally, as well as the improved ability to match supply and demand with rental development. So overall, the parking provided here for the rental component of the building, that 117 units of which some of those are actually handicapped spaces, which are double counted when looking at the bylaws. So it works out to slightly less than 0.5 spaces per unit, which is what we think, it seems like a reasonable amount.
Okay, and so, and thank you for that. And from a, from a planning department perspective, how does this overlay with, with the Broadway plan then? As far as transit oriented development and where the Broadway plan is going?
Hi councillor, this is Kevin McNaney from Special Projects.
Hi Kevin.
The Broadway plan is well underway. We finished our first phase of consultation with over 10,000 people engaged. We brought you guidelines, guiding principles last fall, which you approved. I won't comment on form and the application itself because Ms. Crowley and Mr. Chang have already done that. What I will say is that we heard a huge cry for more rental properties in the area and a huge concern about displacements. So I can't tell you where the plan is going because we haven't entered our next phase of consultation because of COVID, but I will say that this is supported by the guiding principles approved by this council last fall.
So on that line of thinking then, Mr. McNaney, does, does the precedent that a building of this scale with this amount of parking, does that, does that in any way sort of prejudice development of the plan and predetermine which way the plan is gonna go?
No, I would say no councillor. We still have a lot of consultation to do. Unfortunately, we were about to go out in March when things changed in the world. So we're hoping this fall we can go out and start talking about form of development, appropriate land use changes, et cetera.
So in theory.
We're apart from deciding.
Right, but in theory then if this was to be approved at 26 stories and then the plan sort of really headed in a different built form kind of scale, this could be an anomaly, either taller or even shorter, I suppose. Just 15 seconds.
This, sorry, I'll be quick. This precedes the plan as for the council rezoning policy, so I don't think it's a precedent for the plan. We haven't got there yet.
Okay, thanks, Mr. McNaney. I'm on top. Thank you councillor Weave, please go ahead, five minutes.
Yeah, most of my questions have been asked. I just have one question to the proponent and that's on the DCL waivers. We've seen projects come into city council that have been able to get their DCL waiver. They have applied, they've been able to apply for it, however, they haven't recognizing the importance of being a community player and being able for the city to deliver on the community services that that funding represents, including childcare and green space. So I'm just wondering, have you looked at the opportunity to pay the full DCL, citywide DCL and the utility DCL to the city, recognizing that you've wanted to and you've stated in the past, want to be a community player in ensuring that we can deliver the services that the residents of this building would want to utilize?
Delivering the MRRR units and providing housing at the whole market, we think is contributing to the world to the community. It's just everywhere, you know, financial world that we live in, to deliver units that in perfect condition are gonna be non-market rent. So there needs to be help for us to get the projects under way at the front end. I don't know how else to answer that.
And I recognize that, but recognizing that the CAC for even the 12 stores would be over $9 million in savings. And so I think that if there was an opportunity, I think that right now we're seeing a reduction in DCLs for the city, which is going to make it difficult to deliver the services that the residents in this building are going to need. So I'm just wondering, is there a financial ability by your company to provide, pay for city, full citywide DCLs so that the community recognizes that you'd be able to help deliver on some of the community services that the neighborhoods in whole would be able to benefit from?
Well, there's a services agreement in the CAC. I believe the services agreement.
Just gonna, just gonna interrupt you there for a second councillor Weave. I can hear, I think it's you breathing into the microphone, so it's making us hard to hear. If you could just put yourself on mute while we're hearing from the applicant or somebody's breathing into the microphone. So if you just check your mute, great. Okay, thanks. And applicant, please continue with your response.
So we do a services agreement and it includes all the offsite upgrades and we contribute to that with the city. So it's not purely just the CAC's giving way. We are operating to ensure the building conforms and we upgrade the city services as required under the services.
But you didn't look at delivering on the DCLs like other developers that have come to the city have done? Is that correct?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Councillor Hardwick, I see you're on the queue.
I'd like to move another round of questions.
Okay, thanks. And I just want to.
Point of privilege?
Yes, we have a.
Councillor Dejanova.
Go ahead councillor.
I was just hoping you could put me on the queue for questions. My apologies.
Okay, we do have a movement, a mover for councillor Hardwick's move of motion for a second round of questions. Just to keep in mind councillor, we do have an opportunity to ask staff questions after we hear from speakers, of which we have many, but I do need a second or four of this motion.
Second councillor Dominado.
Okay, I'm gonna put us on to a queue if you'd like to speak to this round. If not, councillor Hardwick, go ahead.
I just have some additional questions to staff that I would like to hear from, won't take long, but I would appreciate the opportunity to ask them now rather than waiting and they won't take long.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to speak to this? Okay, I'm gonna call a yays and nays then. If I do hear any nays, I will call a recorded vote. So all in favor of extending for a second round, say yea.
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 And oppose, say nay. Thanks so much. So we have a second round. So councillor Hardwick, I'm, I will just, we have councillor Dominado also for the second round, but councillor Dejanova has not yet asked a question in the first round, so I will put councillor Dejanova on first and then proceed back to your second round. So go ahead councillor Dejanova, up to five minutes.
Thanks very much. And I have a question for the applicant, for Mr. Papa John, if possible. Just looking at sort of the MRRR programs and hearing the other councillors' questions and your answers was great. I've been taking some notes and I only have a couple of questions that weren't covered off. And that is, with the DCL waiver, the idea of that waiver and the policy for it is to deepen affordability. Do you feel that without the DCL waiver or, and without the policy around the moderate income rental pilot, right now it's a pilot, that would you still have been able to get the same affordability in the, to the level that you have in those units without that waiver?
No, it would impact the affordability, that's for sure, and delivery of the building. And we're pushing it. We're even doing more of the MRRR units than required under the pilot program. So, you know, we worked very hard with staff to deliver as much affordability as we could.
Okay, thank you very much. And then just another question that was asked, a follow up question I had is. Okay, thank you very much. And then just another question that was asked, a follow-up question I had is, you know, when you, when you look at that DCL waiver, uh, if you were, if you were to have to pay the DCL, would, would you have felt that you wouldn't have been able to meet the, the MERP, uh, requirements for the, for the affordability of the units that would be necessary to meet the requirements for the pilot program?
Well, generally, any increased costs would impact the affordability and ability to deliver it. I can't answer that specifically. I don't have those numbers to tell you, but-
Of course.
Do you think increased costs of the building would impact the viability of the project and would deliver the support we need?
Yeah. Simply put, not, if you, only if you feel comfortable answering this, would, would you be concerned that that might impact the, uh, the rents at the end of the day? That we as a council, and we're not here to talk about policy, we're here to assess the project under the policy. Just wondering, do, do you think that, you know, that may, may possibly contribute to higher rents in our city as an end cost?
I can't-
If we didn't have this program and the waiver?
Well, definitely the MERP units are, uh, it's a form of vacancy control and the rent goes with the unit, so it's definitely gonna keep those units low and, lower than the market units and in perpetuity. So, you know, as time goes by, those units actually become more affordable, less affordable.
Okay, thank you. And, and last, um, last one, if I can get it in there, is I know that, uh, that it was, it was a bit of a, a different process. There had been an application. I know we're not discussing that application just under MERP, but the reason that you chose MERP instead of moving forward, uh, with another type of policy that you were approved for is because this in fact offers greater affordability. Is, that's what I'm seeing in the report here from staff. But personally, is that why you chose to move forward with it?
Yeah, we think it makes a more resilient building for the city and offers more people more housing choices.
Thank you very much for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Hardwick, your second round of questions up to five minutes, so please go ahead.
Thank you very much. My questions are to staff, um, in respect, uh, I can't remember the name of the planner, I apologize, who talked about the shadow effect.
Right, okay.
Um, yeah, my question is, what would happen, uh, to shadows, uh, in this part of Broadway? If it's, if this sets a precedent for more towers of this size along Broadway? What are the implications to shadows if this proliferates?
Uh, I, I guess my, my answer is a two-parter. The first and, the first part is, uh, um, this project does not set a precedent. It's coming in under a pilot program rezoning policy. Um, but I will say that, um, as the Broadway team goes on further with their planning, um, I think they would have to take a very good look at the overall comprehensive effect of the built form that they, uh, ultimately plan. Uh, I really hope that the, uh, the members of the public, um, actually, uh, really get engaged with that particular conversation and weighed against the need for, um, for housing and, uh, for affordable housing.
So the obvious corollary of that is, um, again, looking at the, the north side of Broadway, if, what, what are the implications for any kind of solar power viability? Would solar power be viable on the properties north of Broadway if this becomes the new normal on Broadway?
Um, I think, uh, what is interesting, uh, about the presentation that I, uh, gave to council earlier is that, uh, during different times of the year, there, there are all sorts of opportunity for direct sunlight while at another time of the year, there isn't as much. And, and even when it comes to, uh, using solar energy, uh, the solar energy providers understand that, uh, all year round is not necessarily a, a possibility to maximize that kind of power contribution.
Agreed. Um, but this would further, um, reduce the, the opportunities for, I'm, I'm sure you'd agree for, uh, solar power on the north side of Broadway if this becomes the new norm.
Again, we're just, just speaking of this project, not the, uh, not future projects.
But this is important because this is, whether it is precedent setting, um, because it's a pilot and MERP, it's still gonna be the tallest building by a, a long shot. So that's the other question. How much higher, um, will this be that, what, to the next highest building on the Broadway in that area?
Uh, can't answer that question because I don't know what the building heights will result from the Broadway plan. Uh, with this particular project-
Yeah, I just wanna, just wanna jump in your, so councillor Hardwick, you're asking the one that's already built though? Is that, is that the-
No, no, no. The que, there was, so there was originally, uh, the seventeen story, now with this one twenty-eight story. Um, and I think the seventeen story was consistent with the, the form. There were some examples that the, the planner that gave the presentation looked at the heights of other buildings that were nearby. One was a hundred and twenty-five feet, for example. So what I'm trying to understand is how much taller is this than the next tallest building in the area?
That's already there. That's right. I think that was the first or second slide.
Yeah, um, if I could just get that revisited. Cause we don't have-
Uh, if this particular building was built, uh, it, it is approximately two hundred and eighty-two feet in height. The next tallest building that is already existing is one hundred and fifty-six feet in height-
In the immediate area.
In the immediate area.
So well over a hundred feet taller than the next closest building. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Bly, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, okay, questions to staff. Uh, following up on the line of questioning that, um, I pursued with the applicant, I'm curious about the size of the units compared to the rent. Um, and I'm wondering if we have rentals and how that compares. And I imagine that data is pretty hard to get, uh, but I'm just wondering if we have any reference there, that a, uh, three-bedroom, um, rental for somewhere between eight hundred and seventy-six to nine hundred square feet, what does that cost compared to the three thousand eight hundred and seventy-six in this application?
Hi, this is, uh, Paul Chang again. Um, at this point, uh, we don't have the information at hand to answer your question, but we can try to, uh, look at that closely, um, while this proceeding goes on.
Okay, that would be great. Is that something that we routinely do when we look at something, an application of this size? A building of this size? Uh, my question is really relating to affordability and market pressure.
Yeah, hi, uh, councillor Bly, it's Dan Garrison from Housing Policy. We certainly go through, um, the project with the applicant in terms of unit size and layout and, and we look at rents. Um, and we will eventually get to the point on these projects where we actually have unit by unit rent rolls, um, that do get secured in housing agreements that will be monitored and enforced going forward.
I see that, but I imagine that's a big part of council's deliberation in a public hearing of the, when we're looking at, you know, two hundred and fifty-eight plus units. So I just think it would be really important, we've got a few days of speakers, if we could have any idea of what that would look like ahead of, um, because, you know, I think that the, that certainly, especially with this particular project, it's being so large. And, yeah, so i- if it's possible to get that information, that would be great.
Uh, we will, uh, we will work on that and get that for you before the end of the hearing, for the best part. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then in the staff report, it talks about livability, and I just wanna clarify, it's quite possibly typo, but as I haven't read a lot of these reports, I would say, only in the last eighteen months. It says relaxation of studio size from a minimum of three hundred and ninety-eight square feet to three hundred and twenty? So I, I imagine the minimum's in the wrong place and it, it should read that the relaxation of studio size is from three hundred and ninety-eight square feet to a minimum of three hundred and twenty square feet? I just wonder if I could get confirmation on that? I can get the page number. It's thirteen of the referral report.
That might be, um, an error.
Okay, great. I just wanted to clarify. It, it makes sense to me that that would be an error. I just wanted to make sure. Um, and can I just understand more about how the, um, the moderate income units are priced, starting at, uh, for those earning an income of thirty-eight thousand, uh, in the, in the table, um, that that is sort of branded in the MERP policy that it's for those earning, uh, starting at thirty thousand?
It's Annie Moblis, uh, here, senior housing planner. Yes, um, the, uh, the table that outlines the average rents for studios ones, twos and threes is really, uh, meant to be the average, uh, rents, um, for each unit. And so, um, it might be that, um, there could be a studio, for example, that rents for, one could rent for eight fifty, and one could rent for a thousand. And so really what we're looking for is an average, uh, rent for each unit. So that's what, uh, you see outlined in the report.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. And then my final question is just in, in terms of planning process, um, and the Broadway plan, is it typical that what can, what, what can be one of the outcomes of a planning process of this scale in terms of the Broadway plan, is that generally there's an in- increase in FSR, uh, in, in any pre-zoned, um, parcel?
Hi councillor Bly, it's Kevin McNaney again. Um, what we're looking at is the council direction that you've given us to increase, uh, heights and densities for rental housing and office, job space primarily. So that's the direction. Uh, as I said, we're not there yet in terms of where we land in heights and density as this application precedes the plan. Uh, we have a lot of conversation to do with the community, so loud and clear the need for more rental, uh, a desire for no displacement and the need for more job space on the subway.
Great, thank you. I'm out of time. Thank you.
Councillor Weave, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I just got one quick question that kind of strives from councillor Bly's question there. If one of the MERP units, um, started rent at seven thirty or seven dollars, or seven hundred and fifty dollars a month and it's rent controlled to the unit, right? So for the rest of the term, it would be at that level? Even if someone that made eighty thousand moved into that unit?
Sorry, this is to staff?
Yeah, to staff. I guess if they, just talking about the average amount there. So they said some units could be at seven hundred and fifty, some could be at nine hundred and fifty, some could be at a thousand fifty for the studio apartments for rent. The average would be at the nine hundred. Um, so I'm just wondering, if a unit was seven hundred and fifty dollars a month and it's rent controlled, what happens when that tenant moves out and a tenant moves in that is making closer to eighty thousand?
Thank you for the question councillor Weave. I'm responding. Uh, the way that the vacancy control works is the, uh, rent can, uh, increase on an annual basis.
Just get you to mute councillor, uh, Weave. Thanks.
In line with the Residential Tenancy Act, annual allowable increases, so it will, it will increase, uh, at that rate. There is in the housing agreement, in the way that we control, um, the rents and the income testing to ensure that the units go to households that need them and not up, the households up to eighty thousand dollars, um, is through, uh, a cap on the amount of income, uh, that a household accessing that unit can have, which is a multiplier of the rent. So it's essentially related to household not be, income not exceeding, I think it's four times the month, the rent on a monthly basis. Um, so that's how we ensure that a household that earns at the top end of the moderate income range at the eighty thousand is not, is not accessing a, a seven hundred and fifty or, or nine hundred dollar unit.
Okay, so what percentage of the MERP projects, understanding we have a huge gap of units under fifty thousand dollar income range, how many of the MERP units will be further thirty to fifty if we do an income testing at the start?
It's Annie Moblis here, senior housing planner. Um, I think in the way that the pilot is structured, the studio and one-bedroom units are meant to target, uh, individuals earning between that thirty and on average fifty thousand dollars annually. And the two and three-bedroom units are meant to target families with, uh, the upper range outlined in the, in the policy of fifty to eighty thousand dollars annually. And so it's a function of the breakdown of the unit count, uh, for each of these MERP projects that would determine that.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, and that's it for, uh, questions to the applicant and staff. Uh, thanks very much. We're going to move on to, uh, hearing from the public. Um, let's see here. Uh, and just, uh, for, for the members of the public that are, that are calling in, uh, if you indicate you're a representative speaker, um, you should identify who you're speaking for and if they're present on the line. So I'll remind you that if we have. It's a fairly rare occasion, but I will, uh, I'll, if you're saying you're representing somebody, I will ask, uh, if the folks you're representing are also on the list or on the line. And, um, so I'm just gonna ask the clerks if we have our first caller. I have on my list Charles Gauthier.
It's the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and yes, the first caller should be on the line.
Great, thanks very much. Mr. Gauthier, if you're there, you have up to five minutes, uh, whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'll just do a sound check.
Yes, you're good. Please go ahead.
Okay, great. Uh, mayor and councillors, uh, my name is Charles Gauthier. I'm the president and CEO of the Downtown Vancouver Business Improvement Association. We represent a ninety-block district of the downtown, the downtown south and central business district. And within that boundary, we have, uh, eight thousand business members. And most of our members are small and medium-sized employers. And, uh, just a reminder why we're speaking on these kinds of projects is that we adopted, the board adopted a policy in October of twenty eighteen, uh, that we will add our voice, uh, to these issues that will actually increase the amount of, uh, market rental, um, social housing and supportive housing, uh, throughout the city. And you've probably heard me speak on a couple of these projects in the past. So specifically to this project, we are in support of the rezoning. Access to housing near employment areas continues to be an urgent priority in the city of Vancouver. The fifty-eight designated MERP units in this proposal will address an important affordability need. And the other two hundred secured rental units will be a welcome boost to the rental housing supply. As the city faces the economic realities of a COVID twenty, sorry, COVID-nineteen pandemic and prepares resiliency plans for the future, secure housing supply will be as important as ever. The recovering economy will be closely tied to an affordable supply of transit-oriented housing in dense employment zones. The residents of the proposed building at two-three-five-eight Birch Street will have easy transit access to key employment areas along the Broadway corridor and the downtown area. So on behalf of the Downtown Vancouver BIA, I urge council to approve this rezoning. And I'd just like to add that, um, availability of staff in close proximity to the downtown is a common item that comes up in our discussion with our, uh, with our membership. And those are my comments, mayor and councillors.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gauthier. I don't see anybody on the queue, uh, to ask you questions, so I'll thank you for your input this evening and I'll move on to the next speaker. Um, I have Victor Chivjakov.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Mr. Chivjakov, please, uh, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Okay, yeah, my name is Viktor Chivjakov, the Ukrainian background, if you wanted to develop my last name. I'm a building manager and a handyman. I'm speaking in favor of the project. And I also speak on behalf of my mother. She's a civil engineer, worked as a civil engineer for thirty years from the country we came from. So I, I don't live, we don't live in Vancouver, but I have been servicing buildings in that particular area, actually only two blocks from the considered project. And so I, I know the area, although I don't live there. Not intimately, but I was there pretty often. So first I want to thank the Vancouver City Council for considering of this project and any other projects for that matter. You have a lot of information to go through. As I was listening, I realized that even more. And it's not an easy task to decide on things like this. And then even decide not to say yes to the project or to say yes to the project, there will be still people who are not one hundred percent happy. So I want to say thank you for putting your minds together to make a decision that would benefit us all. So I have six points to- So I have six points to touch on, why I'm saying in favor of this project. So it's a, first, beautiful building. So how many buildings in Vancouver that have no faith? You don't even know how your city looks like. And this is such, and it has this beautiful ornament on the side. It's just the whole design, you could just stand there and look at different features of the building. It's just a very good addition. It blends in, but it stands out as a beautiful. Second point, there are some gardening areas for the residents, right on those little, like, side areas, they call them summer gardens. And it's actually, my mom went to North Vancouver, we live in North Vancouver, City Hall, asking for, like, a gardening box, and they told her the wait time is from two to four years on waiting list. And here, there will be an area for tenants just to go and use it for gardening. Point three, bicycle stalls. It's basically almost two bicycle stalls for a rental unit in this building. Why I'm paying attention to it, because as I was working in the area, I always was noticing people on bicycles. It just seems like a culture in that area, that people are just riding bicycles. And this building provides enough stalls, well, enough, it's two stalls, almost two stalls per unit. Point number four, it's percentage of unit at discounted price. What we hear people complaining is always price, how expensive it is to live. And it's twenty percent of affordable rental units is really, is really nice. Point number five, beautiful amenity rooms, one on top of all the, on the top of the building, and as I understand, there are some other amenity rooms also on the open areas, which is accessible to everyone, it's not just the ones who live close by. So someone could be in the bachelor suite at affordable price, and they could just go and rent. And so many buildings in Vancouver, like, you wonder, why didn't you put some kind of summer garden, some amenity room on top? And this building just did that. Because as I know, the Papa John's, the company, they took that into consideration for this project because they also realized with previous building that this was needed. And finally, point number six, I learned as I was asking about this building, more questions from the company, like, I learned that there would be some sitting area at the back of the building for passersby. So just people walk by, they see a nice building, they look around, and there would be a cozy place for people just to sit down and take a look around. It's such a cute addition that even that was, I didn't see it mentioned anywhere, but just in the conversation, I noticed that. So dear chair and the council members, thank you for making a decision that benefits us all. Thank you.
Thanks very much, and there's no questions for you, so I'll proceed on to the next speaker. I believe Michael Mortensen is in the chambers. Clerks?
This is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, yes, he is just proceeding to the podium.
Great. And then we have Ivy Hazel, who's the fifth speaker, followed by John Claritas.
And speaker number three is now ready, Mayor Stewart.
Great, thanks very much. Please start whenever you like, up to five minutes.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm Michael Mortensen. I'm an urban planner and a development consultant. I operate a business here in Vancouver, livable city planning. I've lived in this city for thirty-one years. I'm a member of the Canadian Institute of Planners. I work for market developers, I work for non-market developers, including B.C. Housing as a consultant. And I'm passionate about the future of our city. I'm here only because it's the right thing to do to support the approval of two-hundred-and-forty-eight secured rental homes, including fifty-three homes at below-market, moderate-income rents. I believe, knowing what I know about housing, that the additional height and floor space sought in this application is completely warranted to balance the losses inherent in providing fifty-three units of below-market housing in perpetuity for the life of the building, or sixty years, whichever is longer. I'll leave you the picture of a friendly lineup of people, all, of course, socially distancing. And if you were to count the number of families or households who would enjoy a year of below-market housing over the service life of this building, and then line them up, starting at the Denny's site west, about a meter apart, you would get almost to the gates of UBC, five-point-three-kilometer lineup of people, over the life of this building, who would enjoy a year of below-market rent. So I'm not even considering the other market rent units, I'm just looking at the fifty-three units of below-market, moderate-income rents. This is a significant, significant achievement, and it makes absolute sense to locate this building in the central Broadway corridor. It's the second-largest employment center in all of British Columbia. The central Broadway corridor is our de facto secondary business district. It's an urban place. Anyone who's lived in Vancouver understands the form and character of central Broadway as a very urban place with high-rise buildings already in place. It's at a major transit hub with direct connections to downtown and soon-to-be pretty rapid transit all the way to UBC. Staff have described the fit of the slender twenty-eight-story building and its limited shadow impacts. I believe that the fabric of central Broadway is not so delicate that it cannot easily handle a building at this height. It's a normal building for Vancouver, it's a slender building with floor plates below sixty-four hundred square feet. It's typical. There's nothing bulky about this building. The city's Urban Design Panel, a peer-review body of expert architects and designers, endorsed this application by an eight-to-two margin. So as a planner and a considerate developer, I believe that increased intensity requires commensurate amenity and good design and public benefits. The affordable housing and the market rental proposed in this application is a very compelling public benefit. The Urban Design Panel, in their vote, confirms that the building earns its additional height and density. It's not going to be the de facto plan for central Broadway. This building falls under a specific moderate-income pilot program. And I believe that the panel, and anyone who really reviews it, would agree that this application meets the test of amenity and public benefit with its design, its affordable housing, and its art. So the UDP, the Urban Design Panel, sought improvements to the street level at grade, and I understand that the applicant team has responded by increasing the pedestrian area and the amenity at the pedestrian level. This is critical. The MERC pilot program has demonstrated that the city can deliver through its transactional, discretionary planning culture, a culture this city has operated for more than four decades, can deliver significant numbers of below-market homes at no cost to the taxpayer. This is hugely significant in light of our current economic trajectory at the city level, the provincial level, and the federal level. Approving this project meets a much wider public interest. This is a huge win for the city to approve this project. If you approve this project, working people will thank you, young people completing their education or starting their careers will thank you, and families seeking affordable homes will thank you. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time, and I don't see anybody on the list for questions. So I'll move on to the next speaker. Thank you again for participating this evening. We have Ivy Hazel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead, up to five minutes. Hi, we can hear you up to five minutes, please.
Great, hi. Hi, mayor and council, this is Ivy Hazel. I'm the executive director of the South Grahamble Business Improvement Association. I'm calling today to express support of moderate-income housing initiatives in the Fairview area. South Grahamble has served the city of Vancouver as a high-street shopping district for over one hundred years. The region's affordable housing crisis is increasingly affecting our businesses' ability to attract and maintain staff, many of which were forced to travel long distances. Not only are we a shopping street, we are a neighborhood with a rich heritage and a strong community root. Projects such as twenty-five thirty-eight Birch Street support our belief that South Grahamble is a wonderful community for all income levels and stages of family life cycle. The infusion of middle-income families will add youthful vitality to our community and provide more Metro Vancouver residents opportunity to live where they work. The proposed development fills a growing need for rental housing, and below-market units will greatly benefit moderate-income households. Our businesses, many of them residents as well, look forward to welcoming them and many more neighbors to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't hear a question, or see a question on the queue for you, so just want to thank you for your time this evening. And I'll move on to the next speaker. Just to remind folks that are councillors or staff that are on the line to check to make sure that you're muted, and also for those who are calling in to speak clearly into their mouthpiece, so we can, we can hear everything you have to say. Councillor, I will be doing a roll call check-in shortly too, but right now we're going to move on to John Claritas.
John Claritas has not called in yet.
Okay, so we'll, I'll just mark him on the sheet and move on to Dela Chow.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. Thanks very much for calling in, you have up to five minutes.
Okay. My name is Dela Chow, and I'm in a unique position in that I live at Alder and Broadway, which is one street over from the Birch Street development. And I've lived thirty years in my location, which is on West Seventh Street. And West Seventh is a bike path, and it's been interesting to listen to all the comments about the biking facilities that will be at the Birch Street development. So I think that it, I'm excited if we could have this development to my neighborhood, because I know that it will justify the Broadway line, because more people will use it. And in general, there's so many small businesses on Broadway that are suffering because there's not enough foot traffic, and also that the building will provide more services to us in residential housing in the neighborhood, because as was pointed out by the Papa John studies, there's not even a grocery store, we have to go to Camby Street or further. I'm also a small business owner in Kipilano on Broadway, and I'm an optometrist with a boutique optical store on the corner of Folger and Broadway. And this building that I have my business in, Jameson Development, the Papa John's, they built the building. And they are a local developer, and I can attest that they are very community-oriented and want to provide a quality building to Vancouver. And that I've been fortunate to have them as my landlord, and also that the building that I'm located in still after twenty years of business is a building that they built, and it is a quality building. The Papa John's themselves, they are very hard-working developers and really responsible and have families and employ people to work for them. And they recognize that it's becoming more and more difficult for people to be able to live and work in Vancouver, because they have the same needs to be able to run their business, and myself also. So I like that the Birch Street development includes moderate-income housing, because I'm finding it difficult to recruit and retain staff, such as the poor retailers on South Grahamble. I pay my retail staff as much as a nurse or a teacher would make, so that they can be in Vancouver and live and work. And they're finding it still difficult to live in Vancouver, being paid as much as a nurse or a teacher, and they are retail staff. So Vancouver's unaffordable, and it's getting worse. And I think that city councils should approve this project, because it's a pilot project, and it sets a standard of how a community-oriented developer relationship can be, contribute to the fabric of Vancouver, so that we can still live and work in Vancouver despite that we are not millionaires, we're just ordinary, hard-working people. And so I hope that Vancouver City Council approves this for us, all of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in tonight, and there are no speakers, sorry, no councillors with questions, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks for calling in. And I have speaker number seven is Robert Remi.
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
I definitely can, and you have up to five minutes, so please go ahead.
Thank you, dear mayor, dear council. My name is Robert Remi. I'm in support of the project, and as a small business owner in Vancouver, since about twenty years, I can only express my frustration about what my staff has to go through on a daily basis just to find accommodation. You better know what I mean, and the vacancy rate in this city is not very good, and we have many staff who are obligated to commute from far distances. So some of them need to commute for an hour, an hour and a half each way. And they start their shifts sometimes at eleven in the morning, but they have to leave very early in the day to get rented properly done. So they're leaving around eight, eight-thirty, nine o'clock, and then when the shift is done around seven AM, seven PM, they still need another hour and a half or two hours to come home, and that makes really not a great way of living your daily life. So we have some staff who are very lucky, and they are, they have every means to live in the city, and they can, they don't have those restraints, and they are able to enjoy beaches, the parks, the families, and the social life we all have and all want to have. I must say that this project is, a project was really due, it's a project where we have a family behind which people know in the city. Like the previous speaker just said, they are well-known. And I really appreciate that the council will approve this project, as our city needs affordable housing for families and young professionals, and our businesses need employees and customers, especially after this crisis we got all through with the COVID. I thank council for their time, and I really hope that we can get this project approved.
Thank you very much, sir, for calling in this evening. There is no councillors on the queue to answer your asking questions, so I'll just thank you for calling in this evening and move to the next speaker. Thank you. We're on to David Long. Is Mr. Long there?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here in the chamber.
Yes.
We're on speaker number nine, which is Scott Delangeboom.
Okay, I'm sorry, maybe I have an older list, I had David Long listed, so I will move on to Scott Delangeboom. Thanks very much.
Hello, air council, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thanks very much.
I can see my presentations being brought up. Thanks for taking the time to hear me speak today. Before I get into this, I'd just like to raise the quick point, that it would be really nice in the future if we could get actual time slots, rather than just being on a list is really... is really hard to schedule around when it takes two hours to go through questions to the applicant. But with that said, let's get into the presentation. So I'm asking you to say yes to this project. It's going to be a much-needed improvement to the city and to the neighbourhood. Next slide, please. So you will have heard, or you probably will hear a lot about how this got through a previous rezoning, and why it's going back. And I just want to highlight what was said at the actual public hearing up in front of you right now, should be letters that were written in support, specifically asking for additional height to accommodate additional rentals. Next slide, please. Everyone who wrote in on this rezoning back in 2018 asked for additional density, additional height, additional units, because the need was so great then, and in the intervening years, it's only gotten worse. Next slide, please. So MIRP isn't going to be a needed programme. The construction of rentals across the city has been low for decades, as you can see in front of you right now. Basically, without any rental incentives, nothing got built. And your unfortunate task is not just to build the housing we need right now, but to get through decades of backlog that needs to be cleared out, which is why it's so important that this and many other projects get approved. Next slide, please. That underbuilding's led to a critical vacancy shortage. As you can see in front of you right now, this section of the city actually has a below-average vacancy rate, three percent healthy. Right now, it's point five percent, which is even lower than the city's slide average of zero point eight percent. So not only is rental housing needed, and moderate-income rental housing needed, but it's needed in this neighbourhood. Next slide, please. Specifically, this project will benefit the city beyond just the raw need for housing, because it's located right in what's effectively an extension of downtown. The Broadway corridor is the second-largest employment centre in the city. It has forty-four percent of all healthcare jobs, and with the transit-oriented development, it's going to be a way to reduce emissions and help achieve the city's climate goals. Next slide, please. And critically, it's going to be supporting essential workers. This is a short walk away from VGH, as well as located around numerous other employers. Like I just said, it's the second-largest employment centre in the city, and as a result, we want to reduce community kind, reduce car trips, reduce congestion, and just be a healthier, greener city. This is exactly the spot we need to be placing housing. And the healthcare workers agree. Next slide. In front of you right now, a couple of comments that I just felt was worth highlighting, from various healthcare professionals, speaking to the needs of their employees, their healthcare workers, who have, are so essential, as we've seen in recent months. Next slide, please. Just a little more here, from the various healthcare workers. All of this is in your comments package, but I felt it was particularly important to highlight this. Next slide. And finally, more neighbours just improve the city overall. It adds to the neighbourhood, it brings more people together. It means more customers in our stores, it means more patrons in the restaurant, it means more chance to meet friends and have social interactions, which I think, as we're all feeling right now, is pretty important, because we're not getting enough of it. And this will be a great project that'll stand the test of time, and help foster that by bringing more people and more families into the neighbourhood. Next slide. And just a couple of thoughts on how to make it better. I would love to see more moderate-income homes, and see even more be brought forward by adding two whole floors of moderate-income homes by adding additional ten floors. This is, like I said, right in the heart of what is effectively the second downtown of the city, and it's entirely appropriate that we build and build a lot here, and welcome as many people as we can. The only thing I could see that would make it even better is if it was not located right on the Maiden Road, but a block or two off, where there's less.
Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Please.
You just on your phone. Thank you very much for your time, and I don't see any questions from Councillor, but really appreciate you calling in and participating. Thank you. Let's see here, I have on my list now Riley Wood.
Hello, mic check.
Yes, you're good. Please go ahead. Yes, and could you tell us if you're a resident of Vancouver too? That would be great. Thank you.
Yes, I am. I live in Vancouver on Commercial Drive, but I have a personal connection to this proposal, because I actually used to live on the exact same block in a low-rise rental building on Birch. And I can tell you that this project is a huge improvement over the old Benny's Restaurant. So I moved there when I was a student, because the location is fantastic. It's super close to transit, it's close to downtown, it's easy to get to lots of places along Broadway and UBC. Living there gave me a lot of really great opportunities, and I think it would be fantastic if more people had access to those same opportunities. I'd also like to note that there is already precedent nearby for buildings of this height. I believe the Jim Patterson Pavilion at VGH is actually a little bit taller than this proposal, and it's honestly a lot bulkier than this building too, and it hasn't destroyed the neighbourhood. And finally, I'd just like to mention that if you want to help healthcare workers, if you actually want to do something concrete for them, building more homes near hospitals is a fantastic way to do that. That's all. I hope you approve this, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for calling in, and there's no questions from Councillor, so we'll move on to the next speaker, but thank you for participating this evening. Let's see, I have Peter Dryson next. Moderator, do we have Peter Dryson on the line?
It's the Clerk here, Mayor Stewart.
Yes.
My, my understanding is Peter Dryson is on the line.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can. Please go ahead, up to five minutes, and could you let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver?
You can hear me now? Thank you very much. Yes, my name is.
I can't hear you. Can you just let? Yep. That's fine. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
I can. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now? Oh, wonderful. Thank you, Mayor and Councillor. I'm sorry for this little glitch starting out. My name is Peter Dryson. I'm a Vancouver resident for twenty-five years. I guess I'm the first speaker to speak against the recommended approval for the twenty-eight floors at this time. And I appreciate the opportunity to share my views, and I've heard all of the excellent presentations by staff and developers and the public speakers before me. Let me first review my understanding of the city's goals that are relevant to the recommendation, and then outline the reasons why I am opposed to the rezoning at this time. The city has goals related to housing in general and rental housing in particular. We've heard about the Housing Vancouver Strategy, seventy-two thousand homes over ten years. We've heard about the annual goal of approving two thousand rental homes, and of course, the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Programme. But the city also has different goals related to planning and engagement processes, leading to good outcomes that help Vancouver maintain its top-ten ranking of globally most livable cities. In particular, a goal right now is to complete the Broadway Plan in the next year. And these two goals may appear to be in conflict today, and we need to resolve this conflict in the best interests of the community. We can resolve the conflict quite simply by just delaying this application until the Broadway Planning Process is completed. And so I'm opposed to the twenty-eight floors at this particular time for three reasons. That reason, the Broadway Planning and Engagement Process should continue. Approving the building at this time, I think, will disrupt that process. The second point is there's sufficient capacity along Broadway between Clark and Vine at sixteen stories to meet the housing needs. And the buildings need to be small enough to form a local community within the building. So my first reason for opposing the twenty-eight floors, the Broadway Planning Process should continue without disruption and without prejudice to the outcome. The process should give voice to the very diverse community we have in the city. Approving the twenty-eight building floors now would favour one particular voice over all others. This is not fair to the other diverse voices that also need to be heard while we work on the Broadway Plan. Equity, diversity, and inclusion is a theme these days, and they're important elements of our community, and we must not silence diverse voices by favouring the wishes of one particular voice now. Let's wait until the Broadway Plan is complete a year from now, when we've heard all of the voices, and then we will know what height buildings we collectively wish to see on Broadway, via twenty-eight floors or some other number. So I think approving twenty-eight floors at this time effectively compresses a critical aspect of the Broadway Planning Process, the building height, into this one public hearing. This is not good governance. My second reason for opposing the twenty-eight floors is there appears to be sufficient capacity along Broadway's at sixteen stories to meet the housing needs. I estimated quickly about six thousand apartments from one to three bedrooms along Broadway from Clark to Vine, not including the six Broadway blocks near the hospital that are commercial-only, and also not including other commercial space. The details, I'm sure the planning staff will work out, and the number may not be quite right, but I think it's an indication. The housing capacity of the proposed twenty-eight floors can be simply achieved with two buildings, half the height, and include all of the exciting features and amenities that we've heard about today from the developers. So yes, let's have those features, let's have the excitement, but let's have two buildings instead of one. My third reason for opposing the twenty-eight floors is that the building needs to be small enough to form local communities. There's a consulting group, the HappyCity.com, and they posted on the internet a very interesting comment, which I will quote. "Social group size has a direct influence on the quality and intensity of trusting relationships that people develop. To maximise their social wellbeing, residents of multifamily housing developments need opportunities to meet and greet some, but not too many of their fellow residents. Neighbours are most likely to interact and bond with one another when only a limited number of them use the same semi-public access paths or staircases or elevators. If there's too many people living within one development, there's a potential for residents to encounter more unfamiliar faces than they can keep track of, causing anxiety and leading people to retreat from social interaction." End of the quote. So smaller buildings, sixteen stories and less, I think are small enough to provide that local community. Twenty-eight floors is too big. So in summary, this is the wrong time to approve the twenty-eight floors. It's too early to decide if this is the right project, despite the many features and benefits that we've heard about. We should not disrupt the Broadway Planning Process. We should not prejudice the outcome of that process. Let the Broadway Plan Process run its course over the next twelve months, and let any diverse's voices be heard. Let me leave.
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, and I don't see any speakers on the councillors with questions, so I'll move on to the next speaker. Appreciate you coming in. We have Ian Crook next.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can. Please go ahead, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. And could I ask the Clerk to put up my slide, please?
Sure. Well, I'll just pause your timer while you, while that happens. There we go. I see them coming up now. Okay. Just let me know when you're ready to go, and we can start.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I can't see them, but I'll go, because I know time is valuable. My name is Ian Crook. I'm a member of the Fairview South Granville Action Committee, and I oppose this application. Could I ask the Clerk to put the second page up, please? "The MIRP programme is intended to give incentives to developers to build affordable housing units. The question is, how much incentive is needed between DCO and CAC waivers, along with bonus density, to adjust for the twenty percent of floor area which is vacancy-controlled? I'd hoped the referral report would address this question, but it didn't, so I have developed projections, which I am showing on screen. First, let me explain a couple of things. Cap rate is a commonly-used methodology to value real estate, and the lower the cap rate...
Point of privilege?
Just a minute, Mr. Crook. We'll have to, I have to take this point of privilege. Councillor Hardwick, please go ahead, I was stopping your timer.
I just mentioned a chart. I don't see a chart.
Or a table, rather, I'm sorry.
Or a table. I don't see a table.
You might use your orange cone?
I am using my orange cone.
Well, I can see it on my orange cone.
Okay, it's there now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Mr. Crook.
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, what I'm seeing now is page three, and I actually wanted to be on page two.
Okay, there is a slight delay, so, but we'll make sure the Clerk's changed that back for you.
I think it's page five.
Councillor Hardwick?
Well, for everybody's benefit, I'm looking for page two, and if it's on your screens...
Former...
Yes. Perfect.
Former twenty... Okay, that's what we have. Thanks very much. Go ahead.
Thank you. Cap rates is a common methodology to evaluate real estate. The lower the cap rate, the higher the value. You'll also notice profit margin and return on investment figures. Staff claim developers need to show a fifteen percent profit margin to get construction financing, which isn't true. Lenders do want projects to be profitable, but profit margin doesn't lend in, enter into the lending equation. The key metric for a developer is actually return on investment, as it allows developers to compare different projects under consideration. So these projections highlight the difference between profit margin and return on investment in two scenarios. The first scenario is where the developer has a typical thirty-five percent investment in the project, and the second where the developer uses a high-interest-rate mortgage to lower its cash investment. The second scenario is relevant in this instance, because the developer here has arranged a forty million dollar mortgage that carries an interest rate of prime plus six point eight percent, or about ten percent. It increases the project's interest expense by almost nine million dollars. The projections for the first scenario show a return on investment of between thirty-three and seventy-eight percent. The second scenario, which is the one that applies here, shows a return between one hundred and forty-three percent and six hundred and forty-one percent. To be absolutely clear, I have no issue with the developer's use of expensive mortgage financing. It's actually quite a shrewd financial strategy. The developer lowers their cash at risk while getting very acceptable returns. The problem with this type of financing is that it's expensive, and adds significantly to project costs for affordable housing. DCO and CAC waivers in this case simply help to offset the additional interest expense while improving the developer's return. This financing undermines the arguments the development community has made about how tough it is to make money on rental projects, and flies in the face of everything the MIRP programme is intended to accomplish. Could we go to page three, please? "As this slide shows, staff seems to have a good understanding of the development's profitability, given the revisions they made to the developer's model, and made the comment, potentially far greater land lift that could be achievable from this proposed restructuring. This is troubling from any number of perspectives, and for me, undermined any notion of staff impartiality. The city loses revenues through DCL and CAC waivers. So far, the first wave of MIRP projects has resulted in foregone revenue of ten million dollars, including those projects. We don't know what the developer has also achieved in CAC waivers, but we do know the developer has done really well, thanks to the city's largesse." Could you go to page four, please? These, this page is actually slides that shows you some questions as councillors you might want to ask staff about this application. So let me recap. The fifteen percent profit margin that staff talks about is a red herring. In this instance, DCL and CAC waivers are effectively subsidising very expensive debt. If this project becomes the model of affordable housing, it would require four hundred units, at fifty, fifty units per structure roughly, to be built, and the foregone revenue from DCL waivers would be substantial in the hundreds of millions of dollars. Keep in mind, the profits that I've shown are understated, because we know the developer will be able to get top-dollar rents for the upper floors of this building, given the view they offer. The question which comes to mind is whether DCL and CAC waivers should be used to facilitate a developer enjoying such a strong return on investment. In short, this is not an appropriate use of taxpayer-subsidised incentives, and there are better ways of getting at the housing affordability problem. I do support the sixteen floors already approved here, but I do ask that you vote against this development. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and...
Just trying to get back on the screen here. One second, please.
Okay, and I don't see any councillors with questions for you, so we'll move on to the next speaker. I really appreciate you coming in this evening. We have now John Stovall on the phone, and again, if I could ask folks to mute themselves, so we can cut down the background noise, that would be great. Mr. Stovell, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yep. Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Councillor. I'll be very brief. I'm a property, property owner in the area. We rely on properties, and I'm also a resident of Vancouver. I'm strongly in support of this project. I'm actually kind of frustrated that, I think at this point, with the Broadway Skytrain Line having been approved, this whole corridor should have already been rezoned, and the Broadway corridor should already be done. Concerns about context, I think, are, to use the past speaker's comment, a red herring. Many, many neighbours... Many, many neighborhoods in Vancouver have had a different context before they've been redeveloped, the downtown south, and the Concordlands, and Coal Harbour. This is the largest employment corridor outside of the downtown in the whole city, and a twenty-eight-story building is completely appropriate, particularly one that can provide non-market housing, so strongly in support of it, and I hope we see many more like this as soon as you can approve them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. There are no questions for you, so we will move on to the next speaker. Thank you. We have, in person, I believe we have Stephen Boas, is that correct, clerks?
That is correct, Mayor Stewart, and the speaker is just now preparing himself.
Okay. Great, thanks very much. Mr. Boas, whenever you're ready.
Just one second, and I'm gonna have to say next, right, to advance the slide, right?
That's right.
Yeah, first slide, my name's Stephen Boas, I am a Vancouver resident and a renter, I have a degree in landscape architecture, and currently I work in computer graphics for film and the visual effects industry. Next slide, please. Next slide. You already have an approved sixteen-story building for seven FSR, and it's gone through development permit phase. I think I'm opposed to the rezoning, and you should just go with what you have already. Next slide, please. There has been some excellent planning done, work done in the past with the C3A design guidelines, and big acknowledgement to past staff. Next slide. When this was referred, the plans prepared by IBI Group were also referred, and I'm gonna talk about that. If you look at some of the plans, next slide, there are things like, the plans are actually borrowing in this elevation from the north side of Broadway when you're looking south, and I really don't think you should be doing that. Next slide. Same thing is happening here, borrowing from the west side of Birch when looking east. And if you want to speak about, oh, look at this building at thirteen thirty-three West Broadway, let's look at the size of the lots, and note that thirteen thirty-three West Broadway is actually three point three times bigger. Next slide. If you look at IBI's work in the past, they're responsible for this rendering on the left-hand side, and that was shown at a prior public hearing. On the right-hand side, you can see the actual photo with a fifty-millimeter lens, so I'm gonna speak about the importance of having a normal focal length versus a very wide-angle representation. Next slide. You can see that what's been built is of a different height, different location, and different size, so there was an error in the rendering. Next slide. Very important to note the differences in focal lengths, and all of these photos are taken from exactly the same location, just with a different camera length. Twenty-four millimeters is at the top left, bottom left is the fifty-millimeter that we're used to see. Next slide. This rendering was submitted in the referred package, but there's no information about focal length, you can't see the before state, what does it look like at a fifty-millimeter lens, and there's no choice in the locations. Next slide. I went out, I found approximately the same location, this is a twenty-four-millimeter lens. Next slide. This is the same location with a fifty-millimeter lens, you can see the huge difference in terms of what you perceive on street level. Next slide. And you actually have to tilt the camera up a little bit, same location, just to kind of see over the site. Next slide. This is on the other side of Alder. Next slide. That's the model, you can see how very big it would be from that location. Next slide, further along. I had to build a computer model just to actually look around the site, using the plant section salivation. Next slide. Some of the work progress, next slide. And here's the massing model, built to show the massing for floor height, and balconies and few details, like I've heard of this. Next slide. And by the way, the applicant has all this information, might have to rebuild it from scratch. The view from Broadway looks like this, or along Broadway from the Granville Bridge. Next slide. See the massing, it really stands out, this is a fifty-millimeter lens. Next slide. That's a silhouette. Next slide. That's from Tent. Next slide. That's Impact, have twenty-eight stories there. Next slide. Another view. Next slide. From Broadway, near Granville, around the laneway. Next slide. That is the scale of what you see with a fifty-millimeter lens, here at ground level. Next slide. Next slide. That shows in gray what sixteen stories is with the existing scheme, with some roof details dropped out, so you can see how much extra height is being requested over sixteen stories. Next slide. And next slide, next slide, next slide, next slide. There are a lot of issues with this rendering that's being used, it's not a true three-point perspective, and Sarah Crowley is putting this through, and I don't believe it's the accurate representation for the public of project, because this is not a three-point perspective, it's a two-point perspective, and it doesn't show the scale properly. Next slide.
Just fifteen seconds.
Next slide, next slide, next slide, it's, next slide, next slide, next slide.
Ten seconds, I know.
Just keep going through, next slide. Next slide, you can see what twenty-four millimeters looks like, that's fifty, twenty-four, and then, next slide.
We're actually at the five minutes.
Okay, well, thank you for listening, and I have some extra slides there, and I would just caution council, I can verify all of my drawings if you want to, and I know what I'm doing.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in, thank you. And I'm just, we don't, I don't see any councilors on the list, so that's it for your presentation, thank you very much, and just moving now to the next speaker on the list, I have Anthony Letsonchuk.
The city moderator has sent a reminder email, but the participant hasn't dialed in yet.
Okay, great, well, just, again, we do calls at the end of the speakers' list for folks at Mr. Time, so just to remember that. And maybe, as I'm here, I will say that if there are any speakers who wish to speak to this, please call toll-free one eight five five three five three nine one eight three, followed by participant code nine two five two nine hashtag, and that will get you on the list. Thanks very much, and we are now, I'm just going to the next speaker on the list, Michael Lee.
Hello, mic check?
Yes, you're fine, please go ahead up to five minutes, Mr. Lee.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Michael Lee, and I am a local restaurant owner based on South Granville. Prior to February twenty twenty, my business was actually located on West Broadway at Granville. I see the potential of this project for Vancouver, and especially for West Broadway. When I heard of this project at twenty-five thirty-eight Birch Street, it excited me. I haven't formally been a business owner in that neighborhood, I can definitely attest to the need of a fuller and more diverse community of residents. That is why I'm full supporter of this project. The businesses along the West Broadway corridor are being affected by the current transit construction, and will definitely benefit from the additional local renters and foot traffic. The proposed affordable rental units will help to build the community of West Broadway and revitalize the local economy. I have staff that live as far as Southwest Marine Drive, and I know that if they could live, afford to live closer to work and to go downtown, they would jump at the opportunity. For those staff that aren't willing to live as far as Southwest Marine Drive, they are paying up to twenty-five hundred for a two-bedroom apartment. These are hard-working people in the range of twenty-two to twenty-eight years old. I can see how this type of development could directly improve the lives of people working in the area, as well as the local businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you for phoning in, I don't see any questions for you, so I'm gonna move on to the next speaker, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, I, thank you very much, I have Quazim Natu. I'm sorry if I've missed out your name, but, go ahead, moderator.
He has also sent a reminder and hasn't called in yet.
Okay, I'll just mark that as a possibility for later. How about Oliver South?
Oliver, your line is open, you can go ahead. Oliver, the line is unmuted, your phone might be on mute, though.
Mr. South, do we have you there?
Mayor Stewart, this is the clerk here.
Yes.
He, Mr. South is supposed to be on the line, perhaps that was him.
Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes, we can, please go ahead up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a resident of Vancouver and a UBC student. Hello, sorry, did I cut out?
And we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please go ahead.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Hello, Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a resident of Vancouver and a UBC student.
Are you still there?
Hello?
Hi, I can hear you.
My line is cutting out.
That's okay.
I'm speaking in support of this development. This proposal will bring over two to a neighbor in the city desperately in need of new house, with over fifty of them secured at below-market rates. We're in the midst of an extremely severe housing crisis. This proposal is...
And Speaker, we are having a hard time hearing you, you are, your phone is cutting Speaker, I think we may have, your, it might be your cell connection is a bit weak.
Sorry, my connection's very weak, I'll call in later.
Okay, thanks very much, if you could, yes, okay, thanks, thank you for calling in, though, and when you get a little bit better cell reception, that'll help us hear you. Thank you very much. We have Avery Mann.
Your line is open, Avery, you can go ahead.
Hello, are you there, Mr. Mann?
Avery Mann is here.
Great, please go ahead, Avery.
My name is Avery Mann, and I am a Vancouver resident. Thank you to this worship Kennedy Stewart, Mayor of Vancouver, and city council members for the opportunity this evening to voice my support for the two-five-three-eight Birch Street development project. I was born and raised in Vancouver, completed my first degree in Vancouver, then moved abroad for twenty years. I returned three years ago with my wife and two young children, hoping to provide them with the quality of life I grew up with, that included living close to Vancouver's great public transit, its great beaches and forests, and the city's fantastic local restaurants, just to highlight a few of my fond memories. Although I visited as often as I could while living abroad and heard about Vancouver's meteoric rise in real estate prices, I'd never contemplated the impact that the housing market would have on me until my family decided to move here. At that point, it was a really harsh reality check. Having sold our single-family home where we lived, we weren't even close to being in a position to buy anything similar here in Vancouver. So we rent, and we're happy renters. But it was a struggle to find a fully-working, small place to live that would accommodate our four-person family, in a safe area, familiar to me, and close by to the schools, family, and friends that we moved here for. Even before, and even more now after hearing about the thoughtfulness that the architects and developers have put into this project, I fully support the two-five-three-eight Birch development, because it will allow families like mine to live in a great neighborhood, close to all of the wonders of Vancouver that I grew up with. As the Broadway corridor continues to grow, and the proposed underground transit becomes a reality, this project will be a jewel for the city. To have a beautifully and thoughtfully-built rental building that will accommodate singles and families of varying incomes will provide what all of us need and want: great location, useful and thoughtful amenities, and at affordable prices. I've been fortunate to have watched and listened to past public hearings about similar rental projects here in Vancouver. When those opposed spoke, I felt sad and disappointed, because it seemed like the majority of residents against rental projects share one common theme of being against change. The past four months have shown residents of Vancouver and beyond that changes we never thought possible can happen in an instant, and in those situations, we listen, we react quickly, and we do what we need to do to be okay. Change is good, change is progressive, and this project is well-thought-out, encouraged, and needed change. Folks opposed to the project need to have open minds and be willing to share this great city. Nothing stays the same forever. I urge city council to vote yes to this project, because doing so shows that those elected to serve citizens like me and my family support our most basic need for great, affordable rental homes, thus providing us with access to one of the nicest and most progressive areas of the city. Thank you again, Mayor Stewart and city council.
Thank you so much, and you do have a question from Counselor Kirby Young. Counselor Kirby Young, go ahead up to five minutes.
Hi there, thanks for being here, can you hear me? Okay?
I can.
Oh, great. Thanks for being here and sharing your experience, I just wondered, you said you have a family of four, and I'm wondering how you feel about the size of the units, like the three-bedroom units at eight to nine hundred square feet, the larger ones, being the biggest ones, for example, for market rentals?
Yeah, that's a really good question, I mean, I didn't say where I was living, but I was living in Washington DC, where housing is also extremely expensive, not to the extent that Vancouver is. So I was experiencing some very small accommodations there with my family. We contemplated moving to New York at one point, and even having to be smaller in order to be close to the place where we were gonna be working, my wife and I both work. So I'm not concerned, because my perspective is that the cat house in Vancouver is so much bigger than most of the other places that I've had access to in my past.
Okay, thank you very much, that's helpful perspective, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, and that's it for questions for you, sir, thank you very much for phoning in, I appreciate it, we all appreciate it. Thanks very much, I'm gonna go to the next speaker, I have Edmund Chan, we have Edmund Chan on the line, moderator?
Yes, hello, hi there, good evening.
Hi there, can you let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver? Yes, I can, if you could let us know you're a resident of Vancouver, if you are, and you have up to five minutes after that.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, Dr., I'm Mayor Stewart, my name is Dr. Edmund Chan, and I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I strongly support this development at two-five-three-eight Birch. I would like to comment from my perspective, as a physician and a researcher, leading teams of staff involved in both patient care and research, and on the teams that I work with, we have staff including secretaries, nurses, laboratory technologists, research coordinators, students, and trainee physicians, and, you know, a variety of the staff have expressed to me over the years in finding affordable housing in Vancouver, and I'd like to give an example, one of my previous research coordinators, who worked with me for one and a half years, he moved from Montreal to Vancouver, and would regularly describe to me stressful moments related to housing, and ultimately he had to leave our team, but, you know, some of the experiences were, he would have to get together with three or four friends and share a rental property, and they'd have to do auditions and interviews, and it was very competitive within, like, moments of an ad going up, he would have to apply, and, you know, within a few months of securing one of the rentals, he was actually told to move out immediately because the landlord planned to sell the property at a profit and retire early. So that was one, you know, experience that really hit him hard, and that memory really is quite strong for me. And I have another staff currently who has to commute daily from Maple Ridge to B.C. Children's Hospital, and that really is such, you know, an excessive amount of time that she spends in public transit, a couple hours each day. And so, you know, I'd really like to convey that without affordable housing, several of my staff, or staff that I intend to hire, will be forced to make difficult decisions and unable to advance our team's work, which is really quite unique. We are one only academic possible-based program in Western Canada for treatment of food allergy with various types of immunotherapy approaches, and, yeah, I really fear that without affordable housing for my staff, I won't be able to sustain the program. I'd like to conclude just by saying, in hearing all the presentations this evening, there are a few other points that really resonated with me, that, you know, for example, I have many healthcare worker colleagues, especially ones at BGH, on the front lines with COVID, and they really deserve affordable housing. and they really deserve affordable housing, their staff, uh, nearer to, uh, where they work. Uh, I really resonated with, what really resonated was local businesses, um, you know, benefiting from, uh, people living in the area. And then just the thoughts that people have conveyed about, uh, reducing, uh, climate change hopefully by, you know, less people commuting from far away uh, to the, uh, area, uh, in Vancouver. So, um, those are my thoughts, and, uh, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much for calling in, Doctor, and, uh, we, uh, don't have any questions, uh, from councilors for you, so we'll just thank you for your participation, and, uh, move on to the next speaker.
Thank you.
Uh, next, thank you. Next, we have Mr. Peter McGee, and if Mr. McGee's there, if you could let us know you're a resident of Vancouver, and then you have up to five minutes.
Hi, sound check.
Yes, you're good. Please go ahead up to five minutes.
Yes, I am both a business owner and resident of Vancouver, um, and specifically a resident of the South Granville community. Uh, I have two restaurants in the neighborhood, uh, and for full disclosure, the Papa John's are the landlords of one of those. So, I mean, from the business perspective, we obviously face a lot of challenges these days, and, uh, I don't just mean since COVID. Um, property tax is high, uh, rents are very expensive. And probably the most important is that good staff are really hard to find. And so obviously, a lot of that has to do with the lack of affordable rental housing on the west side. You know, I believe really strongly in the idea that having people live near their work is a key part of community. Um, and they just, you know, they won't just treat their job as a paycheck, but that job and that neighborhood becomes a part of their life. And that makes that whole social fabric so much stronger. Um, I think it's very true for first responders, teachers, et cetera, but it's, it's relevant for all jobs, uh, including restaurant staff. And, you know, so much so that over the years, we've, we've actually taken various creative steps to help secure accommodation for our staff. So, again, this is from the business perspective, but I'm, I'm all for density. I'm all for affordable housing. Uh, and for those reasons, it would be a huge plus if this tower goes through. On top of that, uh, you know, I've had a great experience as a tenant of the Papa John's. Uh, they have strong ties to the city. They live in the neighborhood. They've been nothing but supportive of our business, um, and other businesses in the neighborhood for the last seven-plus years. So, um, you know, having said all that, uh, and from the perspective of a resident in the neighborhood, I obviously have concerns about the height of the proposed tower. Uh, I think it's a really exciting project, but it is unusually tall for this part of the city. Um, and I don't have the skills or the benefit of a completed Broadway plan to fully understand the impact that this one specific building will have on the evolution of our neighborhood. So, while I support this project for the obvious benefits, you know, I really have to rely on you, the city, the experts, to ensure that it ultimately is appropriate, and that the proper processes are followed, and that the concerns of the other residents are addressed. You know, and thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. You do have a question from Counselor Bly. Counselor Bly, go ahead up to five minutes.
Thanks very much, and thank you, um, for coming to speak to Council. I have a question. I didn't catch the business that you have, and is it in the area?
Uh, yeah, so we actually, well, I say we because I have partners, but I have two businesses in the neighborhood, and, uh, they're both, uh, Granville and Twelfth approximately. And I also live within two blocks of those businesses, so it's all very close.
That's great. And what type of businesses are they?
They're restaurants.
So what would you say is the average income of one of your employees?
The average, uh, well, there's quite a difference between front-of-house and back-of-house. So, uh, and it's changing too. I mean, I don't know if everyone's aware of this, but the minimum wage is obviously increasing, so... And then there's also the subsidized, well, whatever you call it, tips, basically, uh, that the servers earn. But, uh, I would say it's somewhere between thirty to sixty thousand a year.
Thirty to sixty thousand? Yeah, that, that seems like, yeah, a fair range. And I'm just curious, how many people do you employ between your two restaurants?
Uh, approximately twenty. Um, not right now, but, um...
Of course.
Yeah, it, it, it varies a little bit, uh, seasonal, like, there's a seasonality to it and things like that, but yeah, I would say twenty to twenty-five, maybe.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And I just, uh, appreciate the, the stress of this recent, uh, COVID pandemic and appreciate, um, uh, your, your being a business owner and, and finding your way through that.
Oh, thanks. And actually, maybe I'll take this opportunity to say thanks to the city for the expanded patio program. So, uh, you know, the weather hasn't really cooperated, but that was totally off-topic, but thank you.
No problem.
Thanks very much. Uh, that's it, Counselor Bly, and we're on to, uh, we don't have any other questions for you, Speaker, so thank you for calling in, and we're gonna move on to the next speaker. So we have Stephan Bodine.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead up to five minutes, and could you let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Stewart. Thank you, Council, um, and thanks for the opportunity to provide feedback on this project. Uh, I am a Vancouver resident. Um, I've been a Vancouver resident for fifteen years, uh, and rented for ten of those. Um, majority of it spent just a few blocks away from the site that is under consideration by you tonight. Um, I, I'm speaking strongly in favor of this project, and I urge you to approve it, uh, for many reasons, not least of which is the, uh, significant public benefit that's being proposed in both market and non-market rental housing. Um, you know, every municipal election that I have witnessed in Vancouver, and it's, it's been five now, has been about affordability. And, uh, you know, every major party that's ran candidates, um, uh, and is currently represented on council's appeal to voters, uh, who are concerned about, about their children's future, about their own future in the city, and their ability to raise a family, and, um, and, and every election has been about affordability. Uh, now, I suspect most of you would agree with me that, uh, delivering on these commitments i- is in fact a herculean task, and, uh, that the tools that you have before you are relatively limited in scope, um, uh, you know, in relation to, to the need that we have, uh, in the city. Uh, one of those tools, however, is, is the MUR program, and it is a real and a tangible way to build secure, affordable rental housing for generations to come. The two-hundred-and-fifty units that are in this building, a building with a lifespan that will exceed most of our lifetimes, will provide housing for generations to come. And so, it is in my mind very much a decision about the future of, of our city and the city that we want. Um, and, you know, finally, let me, let me say that a twenty-eight-story tower, a short distance from, from a downtown core in the third largest city in Canada, uh, on a, you know, major transportation corridor, um, you know, in the city badly needing housing, uh, is hardly in my mind a controversial proposal. I hope you will support it, um, uh, resoundingly, and, and I wish you luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, and, uh, there are no questions for you, so appreciate you phoning in this evening, and, uh, um, I'll move on to the next speaker.
Thank you.
Oh, I hear, uh, folks in the background. Um, so if you could just mute if you're, uh... Hello, uh, I, I have, uh, Della, uh, next on the list. Uh, I just have the one name. If you could give us your full name and...
Mayor Stewart, sorry, pardon the interruption. This is the clerk here. Uh, Della number twenty-four was, uh, a previous speaker. It was Speaker number six.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yes, we would move on to number twenty-five.
Okay, so we have Joan Bun, and if you could just, uh, let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver, and you have up to five minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hello?
Hi there.
Hi. So I'm speaking in opposition, um, although there are many great aspects of the building, I am in opposition. The twenty-eight-story height violates previous agreements and understandings between the citizens and Council of Vancouver, and in particular throws into question the viability of the Broadway Plan, which is meant to set height restrictions on buildings in that section of Broadway. It's also a slap in the face to residents of the area who had previously agreed to a lesser but substantial height of sixteen stories and feel they are not being heard. If the Broadway Plan currently under development can be flagrantly disregarded before it's even fully fledged, it looks doomed, which means that the Vancouver Plan into which it is to be incorporated will be looked at as wastepaper. Zoning limits would be treated, as one writer, as one writer suggests, as bargaining chips, with the city setting various limits and then essentially inviting developers to make me an offer. This sort of bargaining gives no security or planning ability to residents or builders. It can also be expected to trigger intense land speculation, though I realize the city is trying to take measures against that happening. Councilor Lisa Domenato has stated correctly in her motion regarding the missing middle that, quote, "The city does not currently have a master plan that sets the direction for the whole city. This proposal should not have been allowed to be brought forward at this stage. This building would set a precedent for proposals not only in this stretch of Broadway but elsewhere in Vancouver, which would undercut the rationale of a Vancouver Plan and seriously undermine citizen confidence in the civic government. Zoning proposals indicated in the Secured Rental Policy Implementation Information booklet issued by the city in March 2020 would look essentially meaningless. It is a bad deal for the city. The proposal would devote a mere twenty-two percent of the livable floor space to persons or households with annual incomes between thirty thousand and eighty thousand. The mean household income in Vancouver is just under seventy-three thousand per annum. So at least half the city's population would presumably find the tower's market rents unaffordable. In other words, almost eighty percent of the floor space in the proposed building would be devoted to a minority of the population. This violates the principles of equity, social justice, and spatial justice referred to in the July 2019 report accepted by Council on the Vancouver Plan. Other points: The city and world are in the midst of a severe and real environmental crisis, yet this is an environmentally very costly way to get a modest number of fairly affordable apartments. Emissions from concrete used in construction are said to make up about eighty-eight percent of carbon emissions globally. Elevator dependency requires constant electricity. A building of the proposed height will require multiple elevators. Uh, also, the current and deepening crisis of homelessness in this city requires city money to be spent on addressing the crisis, yet huge tax breaks to developers gobble up chunks of the budget. Multiple safety risks and difficulties inherent and unavoidable in high-rise living have been revealed in the current coronavirus epidemic. The sustainability and resilience offered by towers has been thrown into question, and more search will be needed on this. The project has been heavily criticized by well-known local urban expert Michael Geller, as well as other urban planners and academics, including revered former City of Vancouver planner Ray Spaxman, as well as Scott Hine. Uh, Geller notes that "it is wrong from an urban design and planning perspective, out of scale will block sunlight and views does not plan for increased amenities. It's not worth the damage it will do." Scott Hine notes that "not-so-affordable rent continues to be a dubious public benefit. Vancouverism, the high-rise housing style which brought Vancouver fame around the world, was characterized by slender buildings with generous spacing between them so that mountain views could still be glimpsed, light and sun could penetrate. What has that turned into? The downtown is a thicket of buildings which block out all views of the North Shore mountains from ground level for many observers, uh, sorry, for observers from many locations south of the downtown. What will be the effect if both sides of Broadway follow this scenario? Mountain views and street-level sunlight were always valued by city planners in previous decades. This building would cut across the outlines of the North Shore mountains from many angles, disrupting or blocking views for the general population south of Broadway if it become, if it is precedent-setting, as is likely. Much of the planned Broadway Great Street will be shaded. This building will either look like a permanent sore thumb, or else will lead to a row or rows of equally tall and increasingly congested buildings splitting the middle of the city into north-south. I would like to ask, though, if the building were, say, eight stories shorter, would it greatly affect the number of MUR units? Probably not much, maybe ten fewer units. I urge councilors to reject this proposal or send it back to the developer to bring it more nearly into line with what is being projected for the Broadway Plan. And in addition to discuss with citizens all options for housing diversity that prioritizes environmental concerns and safety and wellness in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, uh, this evening, and I don't see any, um, councilors on the queue to ask questions. So I'm gonna move on to the next speaker. Thank you very much for your participation this evening. Uh, we have Peter Andreessen.
City Moderator sent a reminder, but the public participant has not nailed in yet.
Okay, thanks. I'll just mark, uh, we'll call for names later. Uh, how about Doug Purdy?
The same thing.
Okay. Um, Margaret Robinson.
Margaret, you can go ahead. You're on your book.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Thanks very much. Yes, we can hear you, and if you could state if you're a resident of Vancouver, and, uh, and then you have up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Councilors. Um, yes, I am a resident of Vancouver. I'm actually a resident of the South Granville area. So I have lived in the Fairview-South Granville neighborhood as both a renter and an owner in three different locations over forty years, and I fully support the originally approved development of sixteen floors of this site. I am in favor of making room and in favor of a thoughtfully developed Broadway Plan that will grow the neighborhood, support neighborhood businesses, and provide increased densification in my neighborhood. I am, however, dismayed to see the reapplication for a proposed increase in height to twenty-eight floors. I chose this neighborhood because of its livability: low-to-mid-rise buildings, leafy and quiet neighborhoods, accessibility, and walkability. This neighborhood of Fairview-South Granville and Falls Creek is almost entirely low and mid-rise buildings, and many with unique heritage character. The South Granville neighborhood in particular was on the 2007 Heritage Vancouver Watch List, with about fifteen apartment blocks listed in the city's Heritage Register. New developments should complement and strengthen rather than detract from this neighborhood. The proposed building does not transition at all to the neighboring buildings. It has a massive structure that will overwhelm the neighboring homes. It will be twice as high, twice the height of the tallest neighboring buildings. Neighborhoods directly to the north of Broadway and the downward slope will be overshadowed by a looming twenty-eight-story structure. Access to sunshine and sky will be diminished, and this will negatively impact livability for all residents in its shadow. One only has to walk through Yailtown or the downtown core to realize the impact of limited sunshine even on warm summer days. Um, I am a participant of the Broadway Plan process and attended workshops, and the majority of attendees I heard speak did not want tall towers in this neighborhood. As a resident of this city, my city, I want to see a thoughtful development that supports all residents who live here. I believe twenty-eight floors will set a precedent for future development and will impact in building heights along this corridor to the detriment of its residents. In short, if approved, this will drive other developers to seek trade-offs through increased height and density that will negatively impact our neighborhood. The Broadway Plan is in progress, and I have been told that my input is important and that neighborhoods will be listened to. I have heard that we want wider sidewalks where one can walk comfortably, areas to sit away from traffic, and places to gather. How will the Broadway Plan retrofit this structure into the vision of a thoughtful development on this corridor? The tower will be ablaze on what could potentially be a truly great corridor in our city. Views to the mountains that Vancouverites so cherish will be diminished. One only has to walk along the south side of Falls Creek Seawall and see the sadly narrow view corridors that have been saved, and actually require a sign to point them out, just in case you miss them. Consider also the view from Queen Elizabeth Park lookout, and I think that this one day may be in the future may be the only location for where visitors may see the spectacular views of the mountains. Approval of this development will set a precedent that cannot be undone. It is short, it is a short-sighted reaction that if built will be a lasting reminder of the failure of the process that has brought us here. We deserve better. Surely as the Broadway Plan unfolds, height can be increased moderately along the length of the corridor from low to mid-rise levels, providing ample housing for the neighborhood. We don't need towers to accomplish the housing needs in this city. Again, I fully support increasing rental stock in this city. I'm not afraid of accepting change. I just don't want my neighborhood to become another downtown. This twenty-eight-story tower clearly sets a precedent for increased heights along the Broadway corridor. Despite the good intentions of community involvement in the Broadway Plan, I fear approval of twenty-eight floors will stoke cynicism of residents who love this neighborhood. The original proposal of sixteen stories seems a reasonable height accommodation for the neighborhood, so I would ask that you vote yes to the already-approved sixteen-floor development. development and say no to twenty-eight floors. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time this evening. I don't see any councillors on the queue for questions, so I just want to thank you. I will move on to the next speaker. Council, I made a mistake earlier and just jumped by Anthony Letvinchuk, so I just wanted to, I'm aware he's on the line.
Oh, great. Can you hear me, Your Worship?
I can, thank you. And if you could just, just a couple of things. First, I do hear an echo, so I think it's because we've got the council meeting going on in the background.
Yeah, I don't, not on my phone. I'm phoning from a phone, a landline. Can you hear me now?
Okay. It may be somebody else with their mute off.
Okay, I'll wait.
So people could check if they're muted. Just all the councillors as well, if they could check if they're on mute. Okay, thanks very much. If you could just let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver, and you have up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Great, thank you very much, and yes, I am a resident. Thank you, Your Worship, and members of council for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Tony Letvinchuk, and I'm a lifelong Vancouverite and proud to have grown up in East Vancouver. I'm here to, I'm on the call tonight to support this one-hundred-percent rental project as recommended by city staff in the referral report. Now is one of those times that we need true leadership from our political leaders, and that means assessing the needs of the citizens today with an eye on what the future will hold. The city of Vancouver in many reports and after much community outreach has rightly determined that there is a rental crisis in this city, and now there are city programs designed to be innovated to bring all sorts of rental housing to our community. And there is progress being made, but we still have a very long way to go to fill the current need for rental housing, especially for more moderately-priced rental units and for larger family accommodation. Looking to the future for Vancouver, as a result of our many fine attributes that we all know too well, it seems very clear that the city will continue to grow with ever-greater need for more rental housing choices. And the announcement yesterday that the federal government will have a deficit this year of three-hundred-and-forty-three billion is a very stark reminder that governments at all levels will have to grow sustainable revenue streams, and for the city of Vancouver, that means encouraging growth, and specifically employment growth. So if there is one thing we can count on for the foreseeable future, it's that more people will be coming here and needing a place to live. And now, interest rates generally are very low, and that's a big piece of the puzzle to bringing on these affordable rental units. Just think if rents were higher than the rates they are now. So we have to seize the moment, the moment we have today. In conclusion, that's why I urge you to support this project, which provides a hundred more rental units than the original plan, with about fifty percent of these units for moderate income earners under the city's program that's been described today in perpetuity. And there are ninety-five suites for two- and three-bedroom apartments, a real opportunity for family accommodation. These additional units will add an ongoing property tax base to the city of Vancouver for the life of the building. And the development fits with the forward-looking Broadway Plan now underway, which takes into account the growth of this important city business and living corridor. More people living on the Broadway Corridor will help local businesses increase their customers with revenue for the Broadway subway. But most importantly, this project provides a hundred-percent rental accommodation needed and desired by the city of Vancouver. We need your leadership to support this rental development. Thank you for listening and for your time on behalf of the citizens of Vancouver, especially at this very challenging time.
Thank you for calling in. You do have a question from councillor Hardwick. Councillor Hardwick, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Could you confirm, do you work in the real estate industry?
Well, actually, thank you for asking. Actually, in my volunteer activities, I've supported and I work for many forms of rental accommodation in Vancouver. I worked with others to save a historic SRO in Chinatown, and I've been helping with residential building involving much-needed social housing in the downtown east side. In my professional life, I've been involved in commercial real estate brokerage and property management, and I hope to draw on that experience to advocate for more rental housing.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. That's it for questions, so appreciate you phoning in this evening, and that's it. So I'll move on to the next speaker.
Thank you so much.
Again, councillor, I did, thank you for calling in. I did miss the speaker previously, and we have Quasim Natu. Hopefully, I've got your name correct. Apologize if I missed it. Mr. Natu?
I'm sorry for the delay. He seems to have dropped.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks so much. We'll move on to Margaret Robinson, but before we do that, councillor, we are at nine-thirty-six. It'd be good if we're going to extend past ten o'clock. We need a motion for that. If not, we could inform speakers so they don't wait on the line unnecessarily. So maybe we'll hear, as you're thinking about that, we'll hear from Ms. Robinson. So moderator, could we bring Ms. Robinson, Margaret Robinson, on, please?
Yes, sorry, I just see that, sorry, Quasim just joined again. Should we?
Okay, so let's go to him. Yes, please, let's go to him.
Hi, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks for calling. Can you let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver, and then you have up to five minutes?
Hi there, yes, I am a resident of Vancouver. I'm also a small business owner, have a coffee shop in the South Granville neighborhood, as well as the Yalton neighborhood. As a citizen of Vancouver, I've seen, over a long period of time now, many neighborhoods begin to lose the vibrance as the unaffordability crisis has affected our city. And that's probably because of a confluence of reasons, but residential and commercial rents have put a big pressure on businesses in the area, and I feel like we really need an additional stock of rental housing to improve things for both businesses and for their employees in the area. As an employee and from our perspective, we employ about seventy people between our two stores. Many of the people that we employ are below the threshold, they would meet the threshold that qualifies for moderate income, and I know personally from speaking to them that this would be something that's incredibly beneficial for them. Living close to transit is an expensive thing, so increasing stock of rental housing so that people can decrease their commute times is, I believe, very important. Now, the costs of running a business are high in Vancouver, margins are tight, and as many other business owners have alluded to, it's difficult to get staff, and it's extremely hard on your business. Our coffee shop and restaurant industry has probably the highest turnover rate, and having staff that have to commute for forty-five minutes, or one hour, or an hour and a half to get to work, it becomes exhausting for them. And the reality is that they can't afford normal rents in our city. Outside of our managers, majority of our employees make under fifty K, so this would certainly help the majority of that seventy people that work for us. With increasing rental stock in Vancouver, these people who are also our employees would be able to, you know, shop, work, live, and be involved in these communities, and I think that's really important to the long-term health of our communities throughout the area, throughout Vancouver. Being such an expensive city, and I guess, sorry, now I'll transition to the perspective of a citizen of Vancouver, having been such an expensive city and with the strategy to try and address the affordability crisis for a long time, I think we've certainly made progress, but we still have a long ways to go. We need audacious plans and strategies like this Modern Income Housing Pilot Program to help make a meaningful dent in the affordability crisis in Vancouver. And we need also developers who are willing to make sacrifices to how profitable a project could be for the benefit of these communities, and I applaud the Papa John family for doing that in this regard and striving to do that in other areas in Vancouver. I think that this will have a long-term, projects like this have a long-term positive impact on the economy, and I applaud the city for making this a priority, and I hope that the city is increasingly proactive in approving projects of this nature. I think that young people such as myself, it's incredibly difficult to afford to save money and try and buy a place in the city of Vancouver, and it's a beautiful city. But it couldn't be ever more true that people are having to wait longer and longer to actually afford to buy a place in Vancouver. And if we can find ways to make a meaningful dent in the amount of money they have to pay on a monthly basis for rents, hopefully they can, in the long run, be able to save up and, you know, start families earlier and contribute to our economies and our communities earlier. You know, I think that moderate housing projects are something that I'm in full support of, and I'm under firm belief that these are the types of projects that should get fast-tracked through the development process because of the positive impact they have on the communities. I think that it also goes a long way into supporting the city's vision of making a more bikeable and more walkable and more livable city, having people work and live closer to the communities that, sorry, work in the communities that they, sorry, live in the communities that they work in, I think goes a long way to help achieving this goal.
You're just at five minutes. Okay, thank you very much. Well, and that's it for time for you, but you do have questions, I think, from councillor Hardwick. Do you have a question?
No, that must be a holdover.
Holdover, sorry. Councillor Swanson, do you have a question?
I didn't have a question. I was just going to move that we stop at ten and resume in the morning.
Okay, we're going to do that anyway unless somebody else moves a different motion, so, but thanks for chiming in there. So thanks, Speaker. That is it for questions for you, and thank you very much for participating in our public hearing. Councillor, I, thanks very much. We're at nine-forty-two, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker, who is Doug Purdy.
Hello?
Hi there, Mr. Purdy.
Yes, okay.
Please go ahead and let us know if you're, yes, I can, and can you let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver, and then you have up to five minutes.
Yes, I am a resident of Vancouver, live at two-two-eight West Twenty-first Avenue in Vancouver, and have for almost twenty-five years, and have been a former employee of the city of Vancouver, as at one point the deputy director of social planning back in the eighties, which was the highlight of rental housing subsidized by the federal government with land owned by the city and partnered with nonprofit housing. In the meantime, I've had years of experience in doing development management for nonprofits, and in the last seven years have been a tenant relocation consultant, working with developers and nonprofits and churches in helping them redevelop their properties and to relocate the tenants in those properties. I've also consulted with city staff in advising them on refinements to the housing policy as our contribution to making the city a better place for our tenants. As you know, we are in a severe and deficit position in terms of rental housing. You can't go for periods of up to thirty years where there has been no rental housing developed, and then try to make it up in a few years. It just doesn't happen that way because the city is growing, people are coming to the city, and we are terribly behind in the development of rental housing of all forms. So I wholeheartedly support the proposed rezoning of the former Denny's site at Broadway and Birch to build rental housing because it does not take away existing housing, it proposes new one, and new from scratch with no loss of current rental housing. Furthermore, we are currently in a perfect storm with the COVID-19 crisis going on right now, projects being delayed in the processing, projects taking considerable more time than they might or should. I was involved with this project on behalf of James between 2016 and 2018 to assist them with the process in the public information meeting. I am no longer, have not been associated with the project since then, and you can see that having started the process in 2016, and here we are at 2020, how long it takes for these projects to get through the process and become a reality. With respect to the housing itself, it will be an excellent contribution to the rental pool in the city that is so sorely needed because we have extraordinarily low vacancy rates, we do have high rents, we do have land and construction costs that are major inhibitors to producing affordable housing, and if anything, we need more private-public partnerships with cash input from the cities to make even more affordable housing, if that's at all possible. Because what we find is that when the, in our jobs where the housing is being, existing rental housing is being impacted, it is the more affordable housing where at least a portion, probably ten, between ten and twenty percent are people on low income, another ten to fifteen percent on moderate income. So that housing isn't produced at the same rate as the loss is. And so I would, in this particular instance, urge council to approve this project. We know that the Broadway Corridor is, study is coming. This is a seventy-five to a hundred-year building, that it will be a major contribution to the evolution of the city, which is being, cities aren't static, they're organic in this particular era. The city is transforming itself, and this will be a major contribution to that, so I wholeheartedly urge council to approve this and hope that you are able and willing to do so.
Thank you for your comments. You do have questions from councillor Domenato, but first if I could ask all councillors to mute their headphones, and go on councillor Domenato, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Mr. Purdy, for your comments and sharing some of your experience. I'm curious, obviously you're supportive of the proposal, but just your comments on the height, because so far, you know, of the speakers we've heard this evening, I've heard a number of people say they were supportive of the initial proposal up to sixteen stories, but there are reservations around greater height and what's proposed tonight. So I'm just wondering if you could comment on that from your perspective.
Yes, I'd be happy to. People in general, it is one of the common themes about height, and it tends to put people off, and I can understand it on the one hand. It was interesting because I go to yoga, I live at Twenty-first McCamby, and I come down Hamlock Street regularly, and I was looking at the street itself and where the Denny's site is, and from a visual perspective, I think it will have a minimal impact overall from a city perspective. I think the height is, in my mind, and in my view... I think there the- the height is, in my mind, uh, in- and in my view, not a major impediment to the overall development of the Broadway plan. I think, as a matter of fact, it will be complementary to it because in too- too many cases, there has been this monolithic approach. For example, I live along the Camby corridor, and you have this run of six-story buildings all the way up with no, uh, not much change in height and texture in order to create some diversity and interest on the street. And I think this is an opportunity and a particular site that can contain the- the height, uh, from a- from a planning perspective, and it will also, from a rental perspective, add considerable affordable housing to, uh, the community as well, without it having a, in my view, a significant impact on the, uh, uh, overall plan and- and the well-being of the area and the street.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Purdy, for those comments. I see there's other councillors on the queue, so I'll- I'll leave it with them. Thank you, though.
Thanks very much. Uh, Counselor Frye, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, thanks, Mister Purdy. Um, I understand you were- you worked, uh, for the city in social planning?
Yes, I did, from nineteen seventy to nineteen eighty-eight.
Uh, so, uh, one of the things that I- I struggle with- with a lot of you, and you mentioned the, you know, how, um, the city- city could further incentivize developments like this, um, and in this case, through DCL waivers. Uh, with your social planning hat gone, uh, going back to those days, um, what would- what I struggle with is, uh, is- is- is housing, uh, without commensurate sort of public benefits in the forms of, like, community centers, parks, uh, those kind of- the- the very things that we really sort of pay for with DCLs and CACs. And I'm wondering if- if- if you see that as a potential problem with a building of this scale, uh, and- and where the amenities for the public may come from, um, if we're not collecting any- any public benefits?
Right.
Beyond that, how much of legitimate public benefit?
Yeah, sure. Well, historically, uh, those, you know, parks and- and amenities and so on were paid for from general revenues, uh, and then as the, uh, DCLs came into play, uh, they- the- the funding of those from general revenues were substituted through- through the payment of DCLs, and so there's become an increasing dependence on that. At the same time, if you're doing the Broadway plan and taking the total perspective, looking at it from a total perspective, this is one building along that corridor, and then there's going to be increased density and texture, and there will be DCLs that'll come through the development of the street. Uh, there's going to be opportunities, uh, as I read the article, where there's going to be less traffic, fewer, uh, lanes of car traffic, and more for bicycles and so on. So there's going to be an inherent inclusion of amenities, uh, that are going to be part and parcel of the plan itself so that the odd building that is exempted from those, I don't think is going to undermine the overall integrity of the evolution of the planning for all the street and the inclusion of amenities that are, as you rightly point out, are so crucial to, uh, having a livable city. So that would be my view.
O- okay, so but the assumption of additional DCLs, wouldn't that be predicated by- by an actual plan?
Uh, yes, it would, and at the same time, as I said, the city is not a static thing where, you know, you have to hold everything up until something can happen, again, in my view. And from a social planning perspective, these opportunities come along, uh, you know, and they're not all coming along every day. This is a unique opportunity, and I think it has, uh, in a, uh, on a site that where there isn't displacement of housing. So I think that's a major, uh, uh, positive for it, and it, in- in my mind, uh, bears the, uh, exclusion of the DCLs, et cetera, uh, for the very inclusion of a significant amount of- of needed, uh, rental housing, both for, uh, uh, normal market and for affordable, uh, rental housing. So I think- I think it is worth the, uh, consideration, absolutely.
Okay. Um, thanks, Mister Purdy.
Thank you very much, and that's it for our questions from Council. Really appreciate you calling in this evening to this public hearing. Um, Counsel, we're at five to ten, um, so we have one speaker that's not available for tomorrow morning that is ready to go, so let's, uh, hear that speaker, and then we'll see what we do. So- so go ahead, uh, moderator, if you could bring that speaker on? Is it Margaret Robinson, perhaps?
Which speaker is that? Oh, okay, right away. Your line is open, Margaret. You can go ahead.
I- I actually spoke about five minutes ago.
Oh, you did. Okay, sorry, I'm-
Mayor Stewart, this is the clerk here. It's Speaker number thirty. Who is Cyrus Bowman.
Okay. Mister Bowman, please go ahead.
Um, my name is, uh, Cyrus Bowman. I'm a resident of Vancouver. Uh, I'm concerned with the excessive input this evening from business with, uh, many clear conflicts of interest. I actually rent an apartment in Fairview and was born a few blocks away at BGH. I strongly oppose the second rezoning of, uh, two-five-eight, uh, two-five-three-eight Birch Street. I am a healthcare worker. In the past four months, have given me pause to recognize the health risks of over-density and the importance of community. I live in Fairview because it is a pleasant neighborhood where you meet your neighbors. It is a mixed-model area that should continue to develop with more mid-rise buildings, as is already approved. There is a reason this nice mix has low vacancy. This is not a discussion of affordable homes, getting employees to live near work. The issue is that this building is too big with unlivable apartment sizes. This amount of homes with integrated social housing can be achieved with just two regular-height buildings. Right now, the median income of our neighborhood is already in the moderate-income range, sixty-nine thousand dollars. This is not a NIMBY area of single-family dwelling homeowners. We are a mix of young and older people, tradespeople, students, and professionals. Many choose the area precisely because it is not the high-rise focus downtown core. There's so much property in Fairview that can be increased to newer, low, and mid-rise properties, and this should be encouraged and not given up on with this project. The developers already have an approved sixteen-story rental development at this site with a hundred-and-fifty-three secured rental units. They should get on with it and build. Now, the staff report for this second application is ripe with inaccuracies and omissions. This area lacks elementary schools, parks, and public amenities. The High Density Housing for Children guidelines state, quote, "Development should be within point-eight-kilometer walking distance of elementary school and grocery shopping, and within point-four-kilometer walking distance to a playground. The distances will be reduced where children must climb hills," end quote. The staff report's figure three shows generous concentric walking time circles that do not take into account the slopes that stretch across this area. There are significant mobility issues here. The closest large grocery store is the No-Fill-
I'm gonna have to interrupt you, I'm sorry. Uh, is that, uh, Counsel, I've- if, uh, the clock is gonna run out in about two minutes, uh, so we wanted to just hear the end of the speaker. I need a motion to extend.
Motion to extend, Mister Mayor?
Thanks very much. Do you have a sec- seconder for that?
Second, Counselor Boyle.
Okay, and, um, uh, all in favor, say yea.
Yea.
Oppose, say nay. Thanks very much, Counsel. We'll extend this speaker, and then I'll need a motion to, uh, then I'll need a motion to, uh, recess. Uh, sorry, Speaker, please go ahead.
No problem. Thank you for accommodating me. The largest grocery, uh, store is the No-Fill, which is a one-point-five-kilometer steep walk from the Birch site, nearly double the guidelines for level terrain, which is not an issue- which is an issue not considered in the staff report. The parks that the report cites as local are located between one and one-point-four kilometers down steep inclines along Falls Creek via roads that are often closed in the winter due to ice. The staff report admits that there is no plan to improve the situation, saying only, quote, "Staff expect that the provision of more open green space in the local area will be addressed more holistically under processes currently underway," end quote. The staff reports the local school to be Le Col Bilan, which is not applicable to most students. The next closest schools are Emily Carr and Lord Tennyson, which are one-point-five and one-point-seven kilometers away respectively, twice the distance cited in the guidelines. The VSP reports that element- both elementary schools are already over capacity, and Emily's cars will worsen. The Birch building adds nothing to public amenities. The staff report's figure six shows a lappable public realm that consists of a six-foot concrete setback at the entrance of a building with a single bench referred to as a "small plaza." This building would stick out like a sore thumb along West Broadway when viewing it on the Vancouver skyline, as others have shown, until it is joined by other similarly monstrous high buildings. Counsel would be deciding de facto precedence for the Broadway plan by approving this single development. It cannot be an anomaly. The staff reports this openly stating they, quote, "Have concluded the proposal achieved of supportable form that is compatible with the future Broadway plan process and Broadway extension vision." There is no publicly available information about how height ceilings are being considered or what they might be. A building twice the height as any other is quite a presumptive interpretation of a vision that has not been articulated through future process. That has not been publicly addressed. How could doubling the height of this neighborhood's tallest few buildings be a fix? This building would not exist in a bubble or anonymously, as staff have suggested this evening. The public has understood the de facto policy of the Broadway corridor based on new buildings to be a mix of low and mid-rise buildings, including at major intersections like Broadway and Camby, Broadway and Granville, and- and that this development should reset that policy by de facto precedence is wrong, and I do not see how Council has the mandate to make such a monumental change in character of the city on an ad hoc basis. I think allowing this rezoning would be tantamount to a breach of the public trust. Does the Council recognize these deficiencies I've mentioned, including inaccurate reporting from staff, running roughshod over public concern for precedent-setting height excess, and lack of neighborhood fit, and in the absence of any community planning? Counsel must reject this opportunistic second zone- rezoning application of an already improved building that will already provide a hundred-and-fifty-three secured rental units in a mixed-model neighborhood that is working now, and instead, they should invest in responsible planning and growth. I think the blatant disregard of the criteria for a living neighborhood is no substitute for a plan. Thank you for your time for letting me speak.
Thanks very much, and we don't have any councilors with questions for you, so appreciate you phoning in this evening. Okay, Counsel, um-
Motion to recess?
That's right. I think I just want to, uh, the clerk just to provide me the information of when we would be, um, uh, sorry, resuming, and I think it is, um, Friday at, uh, tomorrow morning at nine thirty?
Yes, Mayor Stewart, this is the clerk here. I can confirm that is the reconvening.
Great, so Counselor Hardwick, a motion to recess until tomorrow morning at nine thirty?
Yes, please.
Okay, thanks. Seconder?
Second, I.
Okay, thanks. All in favor, say yea.
Yea.
Oppose, say nay. Thanks very much, Counsel. We're recessed until tomorrow morning. Uh, thanks very much, staff, for doing such a great job tonight, and we'll see you tomorrow morning.
Mayor Stewart, if I could just intervene, um, just a reminder to Counsel not to engage with anybody in any discussion regarding the public hearing. Thank you.
That's right. Okay, thank you, Counsel, for that, and, uh, we'll see you tomorrow morning at nine thirty.